Good evening and welcome. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the Republic, for which it stands.
With honour and integrity, with justice and law.
Tonight's meeting is being broadcast live by Boston City TV, Comcast Channel 24 and RCN Channel 13. It will be broadcast at a later date. If anyone wishes to sign up for public comment, please see our staff Lena Parvix in the main hall. Sign up for public comment this evening. We'll close at 6:30. Due to maintenance of the bowling building, which will need to close at 10:00 PM tonight, therefore, our meeting will end at 9:30 sharp. You may submit comments on reports to feedback@BostonPublicSchools.org. I'd like to invite the committee to move to the floor so we can give citations. Hello. Our first citation goes to Farah Rasan Hanif, a 4th grader at the Winship School, who recently made it to the 3rd round of the Scripps National Spelling大会. Farah is joined by her mother, Ozna, and father, Raslan, as well as Winship principal, Mana Ford, her teacher, Anna Patricia Montoya, and school librarian, Erin Knoll. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So grateful.
Congratulations.
Dean Coleman, may I say a few words about Farah?
Yes, you may.
So, Farah was one of about 180 spellers. Farah was one of about 180 spellers who spelled both the rounds 2 and 3 words correctly. She, let's see. Following round 3, speller scores for the test plus round 2 and 3 were calculated, and only the top 40 spellers were allowed to continue round 4. But she spelled all her words correctly, right? And what I learned just now is that Farah's father has been in the United States this last year, studying at the Kennedy School, earning his master's degree. So, Farah's only been in the US for 1 year. I'm just blown away. Farah, you're such an amazing, intelligent young girl. We're gonna miss you in the United States because they're moving back to Malaysia next week. But when you get to college, we expect you to come back to Boston Public Schools College, okay? Thank you, Farah.
Congratulations. Next, we would proud to honor Dr. Mary Zortman Cohen from the BPS Behavioral Health Service Department, who's been named School Psychologist of the Year by the Massachusetts School Psychology Association. Congratulations.
Dr. Cohen?
Alright.
Do you want me to hold that for you?
Yes, please.
Okay, you got it.
Alright, so, I'll try to make this quick. I thank you for this acknowledgement of my award. More importantly, I really want to thank the school committee for your leadership. I watch the school committee meetings and occasionally attend, and they're fascinating. I just love to see what goes on. And I really appreciate your thoughtful deliberation and how you respectfully respond and collaboratively work with the individuals here, including students and the groups that come before you. Inspires me and makes me confident about the future of BPS, a district that I've worked in for many years and feel heavily invested in for ensuring positive outcomes for all our students, like Joe here in the front row. I stand here only because of the hard-working school psychologists and pupil adjustment counselors and behavioral health services with whom I work and some that are here tonight, including my husband and fellow school psychologist, Dr. Alan Cohen. We've worked for a lot of years birthing our comprehensive behavioral health model for one reason and one reason only: to give our students an opportunity to experience the best our educational system has to offer, including the building of social, emotional, and behavioral skills needed to thrive in our increasingly complex world where these characteristics are all the more needed. Through countless planning sessions, meticulous strategic planning, and reaching out to Boston Children's Hospital and UMass Boston, late nights and weekends, we work extremely hard to craft the science-to-practice model by reaching out to national experts to help guide our work and by working to break down silos that inhibit our growth at times. Thank you for acknowledging the innovation we brought to this great school district. But we can be even better, and we will continue to do our part to contribute to continually improving, all for the sake of our awesome students across the city of Boston. Thank you all.
Finally, tonight, we celebrate 13 graduating seniors from the Boston Student Advisory Council. And first off, we'd like to congratulate Anthony Engert. I apologize for mispronouncing names in advance as my speech articulation disorder comes out at times like these, so I apologize. Stefanaka, pardon? Thank you, yeah, yeah, yeah. Alright, so I'm not striking out completely then. So, Stefanaka John Newer? Stefanika, is she here? Fania Joseph? Oh, this young gentleman, Joseph Akafar. And we have Lakendra Ross Williams. And Angel Wilder. So, we want to thank, congratulate you all, and thank you for the wisdom that you share with us and the guidance you give us and the city, and good luck with your next adventures. So, one student is Caroline Mayer from Boston Latin Academy.
Thank you. Do you want us to come down and take a picture?
Sure. Before we move on to the approval of the minutes, we want to take a moment to thank our student representative, Keandra McClay, who is wrapping up his year with us on the school committee. And will be leaving shortly to pack his bags to go to South Africa tomorrow. Yep, and where he will participate in a service learning trip. Mr. McClay, would you like to say a few words?
Yes, I would like to say thank you to everyone for all the support over the year, and I look forward to working with more students next year as we come into next year, sorry. But thank you, everyone, for all the support I had. It's much appreciated also from all the members of the school committee, as well as the Boston Student Advisory Council, and our adult leaders, Maria and Jenny, and all the departments I work with, such as Monica Roberts, John Hamlin, who just walked in, and even down to Carla and Emilio, and also the custodians, Mike and Zach. So, I thank everyone.
And we thank you for being a passionate advocate for your fellow students, and you have served them well, and have a great, thank you for having a great year, and have very safe travels.
Thank you.
Okay, now, we'll move on to the approval of minutes. If the minutes are approved as presented, hard copies will be made available immediately in the hallway with the other handouts. If changes are made, you can access the minutes tomorrow on the BPS website. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of May 31, 2017, school committee meeting as presented.
So moved.
Okay, Ms. Robinson and a second, is there a second? Right?
I'll check.
Is there any objection or discussion or objection to the motion? Is there any objection to approving the minutes by unanimous consent? Hearing none, the minutes are approved. We'll now move on to the superintendent's report. I present to you our superintendent, Dr. Tommy Chang.
Thank you, Dean Coleman. Good evening, school committee. Good evening to all those who are here this evening. It's nice to see everyone. We finally reached June, and this is a month of celebration for our student learning. And it's good to see that the weather is warming up a little bit because graduation season has started, and this evening is our first graduation. So, I'll talk a little bit more about graduation season. This evening, I have some updates to provide. I have some bright spots to provide, as usual. And then, I'm gonna end my superintendent's remarks this evening with having our instructional superintendents come up to introduce our new principals to BPS. So, let me start off with a couple of, a few updates. Before graduation, it's prom night for many of our seniors. It can be such a special moment for all our students. So, that's why I would like to give a special shout-out to an organization called Giving the Glam, which provides several students at Binka and Tech Boston a prom night to remember. They're showing, we're showing some photos of these marvelous-looking seniors from Binka on the screen right now. This year, Glam, Giving the Glam, provided 32 students from Boston International Newcomers Academy and 9 students from Tech Boston Academy, an all-expenses-paid prom experience, paying for attire, hair, makeup artists, and limo rides to prom. The founder of Giving the Glam, Maristella Rappo, has been covering the cost of proms for a growing number of students in BPS and Metco since 2014. We would like to thank her so much for giving back to our community. And speaking of graduations, our first graduation ceremony is happening this evening. West Roxbury Academy is celebrating its graduation, its 2017 graduation at UMass Boston. Tomorrow night, 10 schools will be holding their graduation ceremonies, including Tech Boston Academy, where I will have the honor of attending. Of course, this is always an inspiring, humbling time of the year to see so many of our students reaching this important milestone on their way to college, to career, and to their future lives. So, I wanted to make sure every school committee was aware of all the great young people who will be graduating over the next few weeks. And you can actually get our graduation schedule online. Next update, I wanted to share something I read in the Boston Globe today, and it's a celebration of the life of Barbara Elam, who passed away a few weeks ago at the age of 88. Ms. Elam was a mom, a grandmother, and had deep passion for reading, writing, and providing literacy opportunities for children of color. She graduated from Roxbury Memorial High School and attended Simmons College. At the age of 16, she graduated from high school. She became a children's librarian in East Boston in the South End. She made great strides to obtain books by black authors to ensure that children saw characters look like them. As we work to provide content that is more culturally relevant for our students, we should look at the work of Barbara Elam as a role model. And there's a very nicely-written obituary today in the Boston Globe, so I just wanted to point that out. Next update is about my brother's Keeper Advisory Board. I'd like to thank Mayor Walsh for his continued support of my brother's Keeper Initiative. Mayor joined local and national leaders for a highly-attended discussion here at the bowling building last Friday to discuss mentoring recruitment and implicit bias training efforts. One of the special guests at the event was Broderick Johnson. Broderick Johnson formerly was Cabinet Secretary for President Obama. He is now leading the national MBK work. Mr. Johnson met with 20 students at the Burke High School earlier during the day. And during the evening event here at the bowling building, the mayor announced the establishment of my brother's Keeper Advisory Board. And there is a BPS employee on that board. It's actually our Managing Director and Senior Advisor of External Affairs, Dr. Makiba McCrery. She was named on the advisory board. She wasn't able to come today. But she, along with many other members of our city and many community partners, now sits on the MBK Advisory Board. So, congratulations, Dr. McCrery. And thank you for your commitment to that work. Next update, yesterday, I had the honor of speaking and providing some messages, a message out of form to discuss dismantling the school-to-prison pipeline at the Crox Community Center on, yesterday. And along with two other speakers, Lindsay Heffernan of the Department of Youth Services and Ron Ferguson, Director of the Achievement Gap Initiative at Harvard Kennedy School. We had the opportunity to speak to educators and community partners about the importance of this work. This is our second annual School-to-Prison Pipeline convening. I, this is critical work. I think when we talk about closing opportunity and achievement gaps in BPS, it is to disrupt the school-to-prison pipeline. And most school districts actually hesitate to do this work and to call it out because it is the school-to-prison pipeline. I mean, it implicates school systems. And very proud that our Office of Social, Emotional Learning and Wellness and Youth Transitions Task Force and the Boston Opportunity Youth Collaborative all work together on this, to facilitate this important discussion. Year 1, we made the BPS data very transparent. Year 2, we brought in speakers and then other school leaders who then led discussions on how we are doing, how we are contributing to dismantling the school-to-prison pipeline. So, I would just want to thank Amalio Nieves and your team for putting this work out there. So, appreciate that. Yesterday, as well, I had the opportunity to thank many BPS staff and community partners who attended the Comprehensive Behavioral Health Model Showcase. Andrea, you're still here, great. CBHM is a multi-tiered system of support that is now in 50 Boston public schools. We need to make sure 100% of Boston public schools are safe and welcoming to every single student and provide positive behavioral intervention systems, have positive behavioral intervention systems within those schools. And CBHM is a great model for PBIS. So, I want to thank Children's Hospital for their continued support. I think they recommitted yesterday to this work, and I want to thank Andrea for your leadership on this work. And thank you for facilitating a beautiful event here yesterday. Oh, John's here too, from Children's Hospital. Hi, John, thank you for being here this evening. John Reardon. A few bright spots I want to communicate earlier today. I provided the initial release of Brighton High School and Excel High School's Level 4 turnaround plan. We've been working with both school communities throughout the year, since the school was designated Level 4 in September, to develop these plans. As indicated in state law, these initial plans have been provided to each school's local stakeholders group. This committee, you all received via email today, and the State Commissioner, Mitchell Chester. Over the next 30 days, all 3 of these parties will have the opportunity to review the plans and propose modifications directly to me. I also will be meeting, as promised, with the local stakeholder groups in a public setting, both Excel and Brighton, in upcoming weeks. And I communicated out the dates for those meetings as well with the plans. I want to thank the many members of both the Brighton and Excel communities who have been instrumental in putting these plans together. The local stakeholder group recommendations and the student-focused groups' recommendations have all influenced the strategies in these plans. Just for public record, I want to make sure folks know that the Brighton High School Local Stakeholder Group Meeting will be on June 22 from 2:00 to 3:30. And the Excel Local Stakeholder Group Meeting will be June 26 from 3:30 to 5:00. These meetings will be held at the schools. They will be open to the public, and I encourage people to come and attend. There will also be a comprehensive effort across Central Office to support the plan development. Oh, I was just saying, there has been, there will continue to be a comprehensive effort from Central Office to support the plan development. And we will continue to support the schools throughout the summer. And 2 of, 2 of our headmasters, 2 of the principals that will be introduced later will be leading those schools. So, Renee McCall will be leading at Excel. Renee, if you could raise your hand really quickly. And Rob Remedy, you'll be leading at Brighton. Yesterday evening, I had the opportunity to participate in Build Fest Pitch Challenge. The Build Fest Pitch Challenge is the culmination of a year-long effort of young teams of, young, teams of young people throughout Boston Public School High Schools, who basically have created products, and they pitched their products. The final 4 teams pitched their products to this incredible group of people. It was probably over 1,000 people at this event. And here are some photos. This is a photo from the Charlestown High School team, I believe. And the student entrepreneurs present their ideas to a panel of VIP judges in the kind of Shark Tank-like competition. And the winning team was the Madison Park team. Incredible, incredible event. This week is the BPS Citywide Arts Festival. It started yesterday. I had the opportunity to kick off that event as well. The energy in that is, the energy that comes from watching the young people in Boston public schools perform is just incredible because they're, we see arts everywhere. And like, I've been in Boston public schools for a short time, and over the last 2 years, I've seen this major shift of this belief that arts isn't really enrichment, but really is core to the work. And just watching our young people perform is always inspirational. More than 1,000 BPS students in grades K through 8 participate in this 3-day festival. Today and tomorrow, we'll be at the Boston Commons. It's a great way for our young people to showcase and showcase their talents. And I just want to point out an interesting data point. It's the number of students who are receiving arts education at least 2 days in our K8s, and that has gone up from 67% to 95% over the last 8 years. So, incredible work. I want to thank Mayor Walsh and Ed Vestas for being incredible partners and really leading this work. And we're moving into Phase 4 of the BPS Arts Expansion Initiative. And again, thank Ed Vestas. I think Laura's back there. Laura, hello, Valora. Laura, thank you for your leadership, as always. Last week, 6th, 3rd, 4th, and 5th graders, grade students from the Harvard Kent School in Charlestown got a huge surprise. In a very public way, these students received $1,000 scholarships from the Harvard Kent Leadership and Scholarship Partnership. I was on hand to see the excitement of the young people's faces when they were surprised with these $1,000 checks. Their families were told beforehand, so they were able to come. I think one kid got a heads-up because he showed up to school in a tie. But that's all, that's all good. But they were rewarded for achieving academically, promoting school spirit, for being peer leaders, and most importantly, for being a good friend. The mayor was on hand. Principal, of course, Jason Gallagher, the BTU president, Richard Stuntman, state rep Daniel Ryan, counselor Anissa Asabi George, were all on hand. Instructional Superintendent Tommy Welch as well. And we all surprised the 6 students. Also on hand were scholarship recipients from, I don't know how many years ago, but almost 8 years ago, who are now seniors in BPS and graduating and going to college. So, they came back to celebrate along with the 3rd, 4th, and 5th graders as well. So, incredible event. Next bright spot, we had a great turnout once again at the Promising Pals Breakfast at the Timmeltie Middle School last Friday. This program is in its 31st year, and it's a PENPAL program that bridges students with positive role models in the community. And Wally, the Green Monster, was on hand to get students and adults excited about, there he is, about Promising Pals, which does a great job of helping build student literacy, networking, and friendship-building skills. So, want to thank all those that support this effort, including the US Post Office, including UMass Boston, MIT, FEMA, Salesforce, Delta Airlines, Operational Superintendent Sam DePino was on hand, Chief of Staff Rob Consalvo was on hand. So, wanted to make sure you were aware of that. So wanted to make sure you were aware of that. And one more bright spot. It is the Haley School Boat Building. This is a really neat project that comes out of Haley School in Rosendale, and it's a partnership through community boat building. Every year, fifth graders work on building canoes at schools throughout the year. This year, the boat builder teacher, Sarah Bessie, has collaborated with the school's art teacher, Amy Tatro? Oh, I think that's, I can't, I can't remember. Dan, how's that? Tatro, thank you. Amy Tatro, in painting themes on the boat in order to give students creativity and ownership over their work. This year's theme was Messages to Change the World with a Focus on Social Justice Issues. In addition to painting beautiful images, the students painted messages promoting peace and civil rights. There's going to be a boat launch tomorrow and again Tuesday from 9:30 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. in Jamaica Pond, where parents and the community can admire these boats. Amy Tatro is also the number one user for Workplace. And here, it's our internal communication system for BPS employees. So Amy, if you're watching, thank you very much for your dedication to your students at the Haley and to Workplace. Awesome. I'm done with my bright spots. I actually want to then now invite our instructional superintendents to come up and introduce to the school committee and the public our new principals and headmasters. And many of these principals and headmasters actually completed their first year as interim and are being made permanent. So Mary, am I turning it over to you first, or am I?
Yes, may I please? So that we're not sort of back and forth, we might invite you to come and take us even to the front rows and everything.
Great, thank you.
So we are very excited to introduce this stellar group of individuals who are going to be new leaders in our schools for next year. In typical Boston public schools fashion, we've created a deck that is alphabetical by last name of the school. So Mary, when the steps are shoved up and down the line, let me introduce our new school leaders. So I have the honor and privilege of introducing, making the first introduction, Rodolfo Morales, step forward so we can, is going to be the next leader of the Bates Elementary School in Rosendale. Rodolfo was himself an English language learner, and he brings that experience to his work in BPS. He's been, he was a Boston Teacher Resident Fellow. He has been a teacher in one of our two-way bilingual schools, and then a principal intern in another of our two-way bilingual schools. He has a keen commitment to social justice, and the team at the Bates, while they're very sorry to be losing their current principal, feel like Rodolfo is exactly the right person to continue the work at the Bates.
Good evening, everyone. It's my distinct pleasure to introduce Mr. Jamel Adkin Sharif. He is the next principal of the Blackstone Innovation School, and he brings to us a wealth of experience from working in both charter schools and other school districts, alternative schools, has had experience from early childhood all the way through alternative high school experience, is also a lawyer in one of his past lives, and is currently pursuing his doctorate. And so the Blackstone School is very excited to welcome Jamel to be the next leader of the work that they're doing there.
Good evening, everyone. Rachel Skerritt is unfortunately not able to attend tonight because she is still in DC, but I do want to take this opportunity to publicly announce her to the school committee as the headmaster of Boston Latin School. Rachel Skerritt is the Deputy Chief of Leadership and Development in DC and has successfully turned around Eastern High School there. Prior to that, she was at, in many positions, some of which I think that she would recognize as most dear to her is as a teacher and a leader here at ACC. I also want to say she is one of several that I will be announcing who is also a Boston Public School graduate. So I'm very excited to welcome her to Boston.
So I'm delighted to be announcing Rob Remedy officially, to be taking over as the next headmaster of Brighton High School in its turnaround process. Coming to Brighton High School is a homecoming for Rob, who began his teaching career at Brighton High School and actually had a very distinguished career at Brighton High as a teacher and really as a lead teacher, bringing all sorts of important and impactful programming into the high school when he was there. He went on from Brighton High to serve as the principal of the Edwards Middle School, where he was a fantastic instructional leader and impressed us tremendously as we were talking to him about the potential of taking over at Brighton High. And it's been a delight working with him over the last several months as we've been doing the work to get the turnaround going. And he brings tremendous expertise. Just a few more little details, he was a Lynch Fellow last year and brings that training and was a summa cum laude graduate of Boston College in his background as well. So glad to have him take over.
So it is my pleasure to introduce Robin Lee as the permanent headmaster at the Community Academy of Science and Health on behalf of my colleague Anthony Pope, who can join us today. So Robin is finishing her interim year, a very successful interim year at CASH this year. Prior to becoming the headmaster, she also served as the science director at CASH for six years. During that time, she was instrumental in dramatically increasing the graduation rate for students at CASH. Prior to joining CASH, she was a teacher in Boston public schools for eight years as well. And Robin lives in Dorchester with her two girls, one of which is here to celebrate with mom today. So Robin Lee. It is also my pleasure to introduce Renee McCall as the incoming headmaster of Excel High School to lead the turnaround work there. Renee started as a, in the finance world, where she had a successful career for eight years, working KPMG and John Hancock. And then she switched careers and became a high school math teacher in BPS about 10 years ago, teaching at English High School, Brook Farm Academy, and then becoming a cluster leader at Madison Park. Most recently, Renee has led the Timelte School for the last four years, and in that role has developed strong teacher leadership and collaborative decision-making and led amazing programs like the Promising Pals. Renee is a native of Boston, a graduate of Boston Latin School, and she lives in Hyde Park with her husband and two sons. So Renee McCall.
Actually, both of you. Come on over. So starting with Maritza. So Maritza Siliberto has been the interim principal at the Horace Mann School, the oldest day school in the country for the deaf and hard of hearing. And I am happy to announce that she is now the permanent principal of the Horace Mann. She is here today with her team, her very excited team, and her family. Her three young boys are all Boston Public School students, and they live in Brighton. So I'm very excited that she's able to celebrate today. Maritza has worked 20 years at the Horace, or around 20 years at the Horace Mann. She is multilingual in Spanish, American ASL, Puerto Rican ASL, and there are many other languages in ASL. So she is supporting a very diverse community. We're excited for all that is coming to the Horace Mann due to her leadership. It is also my pleasure to present Dr. Christine Copeland, who has been the interim principal at the John F. Kennedy Innovation School in Jamaica Plain. She is now the permanent principal of the JFK, and in this role, she has really worked closely with the community to cultivate a new, a culture of STEM education and a future for the school in that work. Very happy to say that she is also a Boston Public School proud graduate from the Jeremiah Burke High School, and we look forward to the great things that are to come from the JFK. Thank you.
Good, good evening. My name is Tommy Welch. I'm the instructional superintendent for TLT 3B, and I would love to introduce a young woman who I worked with all through this year as an interim principal at the PJK, PJ, Patrick Kennedy Elementary School, who's now the permanent principal. So come on over here, Kristen. She's loving that we switched her picture at the last minute, and I had a placeholder there that was actually her freshman soccer pitcher from Emmanuel College. It was just a placeholder, but it was interesting when I found it on the page, it says, what I hope to be grow up, I hope to be a teacher. Kristen really is an educator. She's a lead teacher at her school. She has a tremendous passion for inclusive practices and the inclusion model. She's not afraid to get her, her hands dirty. She's redecorated bathrooms and teacher staff rooms throughout this year. So we've worked closely together. She dances with our kids, she plays soccer with our kids, but she's a great addition to all of our portfolio schools, and everyone couldn't be happier to have you back.
It is also my pleasure to present Dr. Freeman Wisdom. Dr. Freeman Wisdom is at the O'Brien High School, John D. O'Brien School of Science, Math and Science, mathematics and science. I'm also very excited because Dr. Copeland and Dr. Freeman Wisdom were part of my doctoral program, and we were here recently, being recognized by the school committee, so it's kind of very excited to present her. She is also a graduate of the O'Brien and returns to our alma mater. She was a previous principal of CASH, and we look forward to all the great work that she has begun there in supporting that school moving forward. Thank you so much for that.
Next, I have the privilege of introducing Dunladi Babit. Dunladi is someone who is a teacher leader, who has been exercising that leadership at the BTU Pilot School for the last few years, and is now ready to step out and take up the leadership role at the Philbrick School. Dunladi is someone who is going to lead with his heart. He really impressed the team who was searching for a leader with his relational capacity, and so we look forward to the way that he is going to be able to build really strong relationships between students, teachers, and families at the Philbrick and in the greater Rosendale community.
It's my distinct pleasure to introduce Tashiba Martin. She will be the next principal of the Timelte Middle School, taking the reins after Renee McCall has transitioned over to Excel, and I'm really excited. Ms. Martin comes to us from Young Achievers, where she was the head of their upper school, and she brings a broad range of experience, being a teacher trained and worked at the McKinley Schools. So she knows how to work with students with special population, special disabilities, and she's able to bring that expertise to the Timelte School. And we're just really excited to have her be the next leader, and she brings a lot of excitement and is already transitioning to the school. And it is my distinct pleasure to also introduce Ms. Sarita Thomas, who is going to be the next principal at Trotter Innovation School, and we are really excited to have her join the team there. She is bringing a wealth of experience, being at the Irving, and also last year, she was at the, or this coming year, this present year, she was at the Matter Hunt. And Ms. Martin brings, I'm sorry, Ms. Thomas brings a lot of math experience to her experience that she's going to be bringing to the Trotter School. She is a proud graduate of the John D. O'Brien, and we're just excited to have her be part of the team and lead the Trotter.
Oh, there it is. Oh, yeah. One more.
I don't have my slide.
Oh, it's not coming up.
Oh, there we go. Okay. Last but certainly not least, it is my privilege to introduce Mr. Sean Guthrie, who will be the new principal of Young Achievers. He is a career changer, so former NFL player. I don't know if you could tell just by looking at him. We're a good, we're a good pair. And so I think that's our, you know, a first for Boston public schools. So he came in as a math teacher at Monument High and also had an administrative role in Cambridge. Coming out from the Lynch Program, most recently at the Curly as a principal fellow. He's very excited to start at Young Achievers. And two things I've noticed about him is, in my short times with him, he has this incredible moral imperative that really comes through in everything he does, everything he says, and every decision he makes. And the other is a real focus on systems thinking. I think from having spent so many, so much time in athletics and as an athlete, he's got a game plan for everything. I've already seen him enacting that. And he needs one because he has six kids at home, and he's, lives in Hyde Park, and he's so dedicated to YA, he already transferred one of his sons to YA in third grade.
Enjoy dinner, principals.
Oh, they don't have to staple the whole thing? So thank you, Mrs. Superintendent. Are there any questions or discussions?
Just excited. Excited about your routine. This is great.
Yeah, I would just point out, congratulations to the principals. I love seeing the, the leadership, the diversity, but especially the BPS grads. I feel like it's a full circle moment. And so congrats on some great hires.
Thank you.
Superintendent.
Thank you.
If there's nothing further, I will now entertain a motion to receive the superintendent's report.
So moved.
Thank Dr. Robinson, Ms. Robinson. Is there a second, Ms. Robinson? Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Is there any objection to approving the superintendent's report by unanimous consent? Hearing none, the motion carries. We'll move on to general public comment. Ms. Sullivan?
Thank you, Dr. Coleman. The public comment period is an opportunity for parents and other concerned parties to make brief presentations to the school committee on pertinent school issues. Questions on specific school matters are not answered at this time, but refer to the superintendent for later response. Questions on specific policy matters are not answered at this time, but may be the subject of later discussion by the committee. Each speaker will have three minutes to speak, and I'll remind you when you have one minute remaining and then 30 seconds. Those who require interpretation services will be allotted an additional two minutes. Speakers may not reassign their time to others. Written testimony is appreciated and encouraged. Please state your name and affiliation before you begin. TV cameras will only record speakers who face the committee. We have one speaker this evening, Ms. Peggy Wiesenberg. We have one speaker this evening, Ms. Peggy Wiesenberg.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm speaking today as an Access to Justice Fellow, who got a flurry of hysterical calls today after parents received a letter from the superintendent and the chief operating officer regarding assignments and bus transportation. And so I want to express some of the concerns. I did speak to some of the administrators and have a better understanding of things. But the communication raises some policy issues, at least in my mind. So it says, "Starting today, BPS requests your participation in an information collecting process. As part of this process, we'll be asking you to confirm if known the schools your children will be attending school year 2017 and 18." It goes on to ask parents to provide BPS with your transportation preferences per eligible child or children for the same school year. And it says to complete, to go to an online portal and answer certain questions, whether they're going to accept their school assignment and whether they're going to take the bus or not. While it's understandable that BPS wants to economize and be more efficient with school assignments, waiting lists, transportation, and so forth, the letter concludes, "We ask you to complete one RSVP per child by Wednesday, June 14th." That is in seven days. Today's the seventh. If we do not receive at least one RSVP per child by June 14th, there may be disruption to your students' transportation services at the start of the next school year. It's one thing to request an RSVP and even by a deadline. But we know from the Matter Hunt experience, a short deadline in a busy time of year is, which includes graduations and lots of other activities, is simply not sufficient. It is also totally a different thing to tell parents, if we do not receive at least one RSVP per child by June 14th, there may be disruption to your child's transportation services. Now, I did go online and look at, you know that there's a legal requirement. But DESI also has a memo on school finance and transportation. And it says, "State statutes establish the responsibility of the school committee to provide transportation services for students." And I'll skip a little. And it says, "With respect to students being transported, a written policy statement is required to provide the school committee, administrators, school bus contractors, students, parents with uniformly applied guidelines." This committee has never been asked, to my knowledge, about setting these types of deadlines and how to go about this and whether you can deny people or disrupt transportation from non-responders. We know from the 10 big ideas that were last year, some of the ideas are premised on faulty assumptions.
Ms. Wiesenberg?
I'll wrap up. And that even though we get criticized for our high transportation cost, we learned that you have to provide bus services legally for eligible riders, not the average riders, not just those riders who RSVP in a timely manner, but for people who don't respond.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dean Coleman, that concludes our speakers for general public comment.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Our first action item this evening is grant approval in the amount of $20,000. At this time, I'd like to open up the questions, discussions from the committee. If there are no further questions, I will entertain a motion to approve the grant as presented.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection? Any objection to approving the grant by unanimous consent? Hearing none, the grant is approved. Thank you. Our next action item is the Horace Mann Charter Renewal Application for Boston Day and Evening Academy. You recall that last week, the headmaster, Allison Harmeek, presented the proposal to the committee. At this time, I'll invite the superintendent to give any final remarks.
No, nothing, no significant changes to my recommendation. Allison Ramek and her team did present to the school committee last week their, the kind of highlights of the work that they have been doing the last five years and their work moving forward. So I'm really excited about the possibility of having their charter reapproved by the school committee.
Thank you, Mrs. Superintendent. I will now open it up to the committee for questions and comments. Am I so intimidating? If there are no further questions, I will entertain a motion to approve Boston.
No, I was just going to say that it was a wonderful presentation at the last meeting. And yes.
So I will entertain a motion to approve the Boston Day and Evening Academy's Charter Renewal Application presented. And Dr. Uriarte, I'll take that as your motion.
Second.
Second, Ms. Robinson. Any discussion or objection? Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Mr. LaCanto?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver Davila?
Yes.
Ms. Jerry Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Regina Robinson?
Yes.
Dr. Uriarte?
Yes.
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Great, thank you. We'll move on to our first report, an update from the BPS Department of Global Education. At this time, I'd like to invite Brittany Wheaton Callaway, a BPS Director of Global Education, to please step forward with her presentation. But first, I'd also like to invite Superintendent Chang to give opening remarks.
Yes. The school committee has asked for an update on the work of BPS's Department of Global Engagement. This department was established in 2010 under Dr. Carol Johnson, then superintendent, to focus on more equitable access to experiential learning programs abroad. Tonight, Brittany Wheaton Callaway, who is our Director of Global Education, is joined by Dr. Donnie Tran. And they will talk about the work that the department is doing to increase learning abroad opportunities for our students. This has been cross-collaboration work between schools and central office. One of the many bright spots Brittany will share tonight is the continual increase in the number of students studying abroad, in particular with, or particular subgroups, which she will talk about, which builds a sense, and these programs build a sense of global citizenship and cultural proficiency. And I believe there will be a student speaker and also a teacher speaker as well.
Yes.
Correct. Great. So I now turn it over to you.
Thank you, members of the committee. I just want to say how proud I am of working with Brittany over the past year. She joined the team about a little past midway of last year and has done a tremendous job picking up where the last director left off and picking up particularly from the very bad interim job that I was doing. So I just want to say thank you to her. She's done really wonderful work. And it's a pleasure to introduce her and let her share the progress that she's made.
Awesome. Thank you, Donnie. And thank you, Vice Chair, Dr. Chang, and the entire committee. And special thanks for reviewing all 22 of our lengthy international trip requests. I am honored and really excited to be here with you tonight and to report on a lot of the wonderful work that is happening. So over the next 12 minutes or so, let me get here for you. Over the next 12 minutes or so, I'm just going to be providing you with an introduction to global education. And then I'll share some bright spots. And then we'll review our department goal and some of our strategies for success. Then we'll get to hear from a teacher and a student. And I'm not going to say anything about their stories. I want them to share that with you. So what is global education? I feel like global education is one of those fields where it's so multidisciplinary, it can be hard to identify. But in its most simple form, global education is about developing the global competence. And that is the attitudes, skills, and tools needed to engage effectively and actively with the world around you. The study of global education can be broken down into three basic themes, which is global issues, global culture, and then global connections. On a very macro level, if you even take a look at the world around us and particularly in the world of our students, they have access to the world, I think, more than any generation before. We have students in BPS who are famous bloggers, vloggers. Vloggers is video blogging. And we have students who have over 50,000 followers on Twitter because they're great at gaming and they get paid to play games. And that level of access and technology as a tool is providing them with opportunities that we've never seen before. We have students fundraising for nonprofits in parts of the world they've never even traveled or sometimes can't even imagine traveling to. And then we have platforms like GoFundMe that are allowing students to say, "Hey, I want to go somewhere, and I'm going to create a story about it, and then I'm going to put it on GoFundMe." And they happen. And then on a very micro level, if you just look at our local communities, starting within our classrooms, we are an extremely rich and diverse nation. I mean, well, we are, not nation, but we are a diverse district. When you look at the number of where our students come from, the language is spoken. There's a lot of rich dialogue happening throughout the district in regards to identity and culture. And then when you step out of the classroom and you look at the nonprofits and the universities that are around us and their connection to every corner of the world, it then becomes apparent that Boston is the gateway to the world. And it really starts here with our students. And for all of us on a very personal level, if you can just recall the first time you traveled and stepped off an airplane and interacted with a new place. I know for me, that was in college, my freshman year at Wheelock, where I got to take a service learning trip to Ghana. And I never even thought that was an opportunity. So to see students doing that at such a young age, I'll share with you, you know, this year, we had sixth graders go to Costa Rica. And where does that happen, you know? So this kind of growing global interdependence is really defining this moment in history for us. So then it demands that we are really fostering a generation of individuals who can engage effectively in global problem solving and innovation. And that's why it is, was, was our goal and remains our goal since the department's inception in 2010, to increase the quality and number of international experiences for all BPS students. When I took on this role in last April of 2016, it was actually a week before April vacation. So I got the full immersion. One of the most compelling processes for trying to figure out what would be the function of this department and what's the function of global education within the framework of Dr. Chang's commitment to fostering equity, innovation, and coherence, as I was kind of situating my work within that world, a lot of questions arose that I knew I needed to answer in order to further this work. Because if it was going to be my mission to increase the number of all students traveling, I needed to look at who was traveling, who isn't traveling, where they were going, and then the quality of those programs happening throughout the district. So then it became me and Donnie's job to take a really deep data dive to see exactly what was going on. I'll share some of that. But first, I want to share some bright spots to kind of set the background for what's happening. So there's so many, but I just want to try to highlight a few within our three themes here. In regards to equity, Madison Park High School in my department collaborated on Madison Park's first service trip ever. What is so amazing about this is that they were able to, well, the Allied Health Program raised over $40,000 in nine months to make this happen. And you'll get to hear from the instructor tonight who led that. And for our April vacation, we had over 250 travelers. Half of those students got on the airplane for the first time. I don't even know what to say after that, that when you saw the students arrive at the airport and when they come back, it is truly heartwarming. It's incredible. I've also had the opportunity to collaborate with the OAG Office on two, several different projects, but two in particular. And working with EFA, we created an international PD that will be taking a large group of teachers to Finland and Estonia next spring to learn more about their coding and robotics curriculum. And they will be working with teachers and some of the worldly, some of the best college professors there to bring that curriculum back to our district. Secondly, I've been able to work with the Ten Boys Initiative. You might have saw in the newspaper, the trip of the 50 middle schoolers to New York. We planned that, which was.
Philadelphia.
Oh, they didn't go to New York yet. Okay, so the one in Philly, but there is one to New York that we collaborated on. And then next year, we are set in place to collaborate with Wheelock, and we'll be doing a Ghana 2018 trip. Let me just work through this. So innovation, we, my department, you guys approved it. We had our first all arts trip to Cuba, which was phenomenal and at an amazing time in history that we were able to take over students and teachers. It was a two-track program. And every student on there paid little to no money for their trip. That was completely fundraised by Myron in our art department. And I worked with the teachers to, we had 13 teachers do PD over in Cuba. And then also, I'd love to highlight that we had 15 new trip leaders this year. So 15 brave teachers took big groups of students out to lead their first trip. In regards to coherence, if I could just point out, our largest collaboration in my known history and what I could find in BPS, they had, we had sixth through eighth graders, over 50, traveled to Costa Rica as a part of their science curriculum. So, and we actually had the McCormick left for their first trip. They're literally at the airport now. So, and we had, the trip leader yesterday was driving up to New Hampshire to get, to get a same-day passport. So, level of commitment.
Great. So I just want to briefly frame the work of the Department of Global Education within a broader context of our vision for instruction for the district more broadly. And we have been working for about a year now to develop some core essential competencies that we want to be common in BPS. And they're listed here. And we think that the work that Brittany and the department is doing across schools, across a number of community partners, absolutely aligns with this vision of instruction. We think that global travel is absolutely about creating safe, healthy, and sustaining learning environments where students take pride in who they are, their linguistic and cultural background, and understanding the cultural backgrounds of others and creating those sorts of safe environments where it's safe to be whoever you are. Second, we believe that global travel and the learning experiences associated with that provide more access to an agency to met, to all learners within the system. So when a student goes abroad and has an experience that is different qualitatively from a, from a traditional educational experience, we believe that it enhances that and provides more access points for those students. Third, we believe that global travel certainly presents many cognitively demanding tasks and opens the door for cognitively demanding instruction where students are engaging in rich collaborative discussions and conversations with both their peers from their school, but also students and community members in the communities that they're going to travel in. And Brittany's done a wonderful job of making sure, to her point about quality, that all of our travel experiences are building upon these core competencies and that they are the rich learning experiences that we know that all students should have. So Brittany will share a little bit more about the data here. So one of the things that she and I began as soon as she came on board was harvesting and really digging into data about who is going on these international trips. And are we providing equitable access to these sorts of travel experiences along a number of different dimensions? It's worth noting here that we've, and she will go more into the exact increases and changes, but that almost across. but that almost across every single dimension, we have increased from last year to this year percentages of students who are going on trips across a number of lines of difference. And it's note, note here, though, that the, there's changes in the number of black students that are going from a percentage standpoint, but that that it's embedded in a larger demographic shift district-wide. And so the, we haven't adjusted the percentages for that, so there, that's why there's, and but we are looking into that and trying to unpack those numbers and that data so that we better understand the phenomena at play there.
Yeah. So if you take a look at our school year, twenty fifteen, sixteen, immediately you can see that there's a stark difference between male and female participation as we see throughout, you know, the district in many different respects. So immediately, we were drawn to fixing that. And then when you look down at race, I wanted our traveling, our traveler demographic to be more reflective of the district-wide demographic. And then when you compare it and move on to this year, we've had two, almost, no, two hundred and ten more travelers this year than last year. And when you look at the female to male ratio, we've had a seven percent increase in our male participants. If you're interested in what trips they were going on is, they happened to be younger and they were going on service learning trips. A lot of them were domestic, too. So like our New Orleans service trip was a real, a major success between our male participants. One of the groups was almost all male. It was super weird because you just don't see that sometimes, but it's awesome. And we've had a six percent increase in our Latino student participants and a five percent increase in our Asian student participants. And then again, we still are unpacking the, the percentages for our black students just because of the district shift in demographics as well, which was, there was a three-point-two decrease in black student enrollment. So how does this happen? These shifts and increases happen when we become deliberate about implementing a goal that creates equitable pathways for the entire district to access these programs. So in working towards this goal, we have been implementing and utilizing four different strategies, which I'll go through briefly over the next few slides. So our strategies are around human and school capacity, systems and structures, confidence and trust, and then our partnerships for equity. And our first strategy around human and school capacity, that really focuses on recruiting, sustaining and empowering a larger network of qualified chaperones. Chaperoning is definitely not for everybody, just to preface. And when you look at the infographic there, you'll notice that the district has over five thousand administrators and teachers, but only one percent of our teachers and administrators are actually leading these, these travel opportunities. That can appear to kind of maybe be a negative number, but for me, it was a point of interest because I knew that there was more to that story. So that really informed my recruitment tactic in terms of how I wanted to approach teachers and how I could go about figuring out what were some of the barriers for them leading these trips. So I had the opportunity to visit almost, nearly almost every middle to high school that has never had a trip or hasn't had a trip in the past five years. And I had one-on-one info sessions with teachers. So I was really able to understand their needs, their worries about fundraising. And then I was able, and then thinking about sustaining our network, I was able to connect teachers with senior trip leaders who could shed light on how they made these trips happen. And so the, the sustaining part is also amazing because we have teachers who have been doing these trips for years. So then it became my goal also to make sure that we were bringing in new training and new leadership opportunities for them to kind of stay inspired and to be empowered by this work. Around systems and structures, I wanted to increase the amount of collaboration between departments and schools. I just feel like when we collaborate, we make things more tangible and more accessible. For instance, I mentioned to you, all of the middle schools traveled together during April break. When I first saw all of their requests coming in, they were all going through one vendor separately. So then I looked at the price and I said, okay, we're going to all sign up as one group of fifty versus ten there, twelve here, and then we're going to make the cost go down by hundreds for each school. And then you guys are going to be in this country. You've never seen each other here. And then now you're going to go have this awesome experience in Costa Rica. So that is the power of collaboration and having somebody at this vantage point to make those connections happen. Another collaboration, just to quickly mention, I got to work with Natasha Scott in the History Department. We took a course over the last ten months with primary source. And our project throughout our time there was looking at ways to identify where global ed was happening across the district and then to create more outlets for peer-to-peer sharing. We focused on digital storytelling because oftentimes when our teachers are talking about the world or they're trying to show children pictures of what students in Spain look like, they just go to Google. And I'm thinking, and we were thinking, hundreds of our students travel every year. Thousands of pictures are taken and they're just being stored. So we then started compiling a digital media library where our students are submitting their very own primary sources. So in this picture above, these are just some of the photos that are going into our database that are being organized so that teachers can then go in and use pictures of our students around the world. So the children see, we're, we're in these pictures. And that's, that part was extremely powerful and the students own that. When I was with our group in Cuba, the students were taking pictures and making sure, I want a second grader to see how a Cuban classroom looks like. I want them to see the food. So there was also a huge sense of ownership in the project that we thought was extremely powerful. In regards to confidence and trust, when you look at what's going around the world, people say, who wants to travel? You should just stay home. So knowing the way the world is and knowing the climate of travel, it's ever-changing. So as a department, we need to make sure that students, their families, the district, the teachers and the, the local school communities feel comfortable. And we do that by staying on top of managing and reducing risk. We're always very clear that we don't ensure safety, but there are a lot of policies and procedures that we put in place to make sure that we're, we're reducing risk. And so just to point out a couple, we instituted a new travel ratio. Historically, it's been one to ten, but the field, within the travel field, it should be one to seven. And so we have now one to seven ratio with a minimum of two teachers on every trip. We also, last year, as you know, we had to cancel a bunch of trips because of Zika. And so, and unfortunately, a lot of the regions where Zika was, was a lot of the most affordable regions that our students traveled to. So instead of just keeping a ban on it, we all worked together to implement the Zika policy. And as a result of that, we had four really amazing health and wellness briefings that we partnered with the Public Health Commission and our own medical director here to just share with parent. We had over fifty parents at each health and wellness session. There's a picture there above. And just full disclosure about the risks with traveling and how to keep their children safe. I mean, not safe, healthy while abroad. Lastly, strategy four is our partners, our partnership for equity. In order to ensure that there's equity and access, there just has to be a department that is a constant contact and a liaison between outside partners in the district. I don't think I can convey how passionate I am about this strategy because I think that this feature and, and having this department is what makes BPS extremely innovative. Because oftentimes, if I could just use maybe homestays as an example. So homestays is when families, our students, will host an international student for a certain amount of time. This is one of the biggest ways that American students get to travel. It's through homestays. So they host and then they go. And it's the most cost-effective way. When partners in international schools approach a district, sometimes it's so much easier to maybe go to a community where the infrastructure is a little stronger. They have a whole network of families who are just ready to host. They have an extra bedroom. They don't, they're not thinking about how to feed another child for two weeks. But what our department gets to do is be the receiver of those opportunities and then kind of be a clearinghouse in, in, in finding what schools want to invest the time in creating a homestay program in real time. So if the department's not there to work with the teachers and to kind of vet these opportunities, then we just pass them on and they go elsewhere. We've also have worked for a long time now with the Maple Leaf Foundation. And one of the policies that we implemented with them is that every two years, they switch schools within BPS. So we've been, over the last thirty years, they've been at basically every BPS school. O'Bryant will get to go on the Canadian Exchange, which is a free charge to the students. So making sure that that happens and making sure that the opportunities are being dispersed equally matters. And so that is really the foundation of our work and that is our equity statement. It's in our mission and it's, and it's streamlined through every, everything that we do. I know we don't have a lot of time left, but I have two speakers that I want to welcome. Our first speaker is Ariana Dixon-Artiz. She's from Boston Latin Academy. And she's just going to take a couple of minutes to share her experience. And then to follow, we have Ms. Bailey, who is an Allied Health instructor, instructor from Madison Park, who will be off in nine days. So first, we'll bring up Ariana.
Hi, everyone. I was definitely not expecting to see a picture of myself while speaking to you guys today, but I don't mind it. So my name is Ariana Artiz Dixon and I am a graduate of Boston Latin Academy. I'm actually walking across the stage this Sunday. So that's exciting. I'm really excited to be moving on to college and I will be attending UMass Boston this fall on a full-ride scholarship with a major in environmental science and concentration in policy and management. So, why am I here? So I was one of the selected and invited students to go to Cuba this last February break on an arts and cultural immersion week. There were twelve students that were selected, six boys, six girls in BPS, some of which were theater majors, film majors, photographers, musicians, sculptors, et cetera. And this trip was so educational and significant to me. We visited museums, local art, high schools, universities, dance studios, art trading markets, community centers. We even saw a live Afro-Cuban dance performance and in the end, we actually got to take part in it, which was really awesome. We even visited a community center that teaches different art mediums to young adults with Down Syndrome and then got to participate in a dance party with them in the end. So being in a new environment allowed me to think out of the box and truly immerse myself in a global art exchange. So I'm a Jamaica Plain resident and if you know anything about JP, there's art everywhere. There's always been graffiti on my walls, cardboard sculptures on my sidewalks and murals on just about every street corner. However, when I was walking the streets of La Habana Vieja, I saw that art was more than an aesthetic to Cubans. It was definitely not a privilege like it is here in Boston. The streets of Havana were live with people dancing salsa, really loud music playing. There were young men painting on the floor. There were women sculpting in front of old cathedrals. It was as if art was a human right in Cuba. And art was both tangible and intangible in Cuba. And I loved having to explain that to my American friends when I got back home. So just some background, I identify as a visual artist and I make sculptures for civic engagement with found materials. And I also do printmaking and I draw. While being in Cuba, I did not learn any technical skills, not even when we visited the Visual Arts School. What I learned was that there are places in the world that appreciate non-conventional artists like myself. And as a Dominican-American young woman, merging my identity with my art is the strongest act of self-righteousness I can take. What I found was that Cubans are very welcoming and share a culture very similar to my Dominican culture. And this trip allowed me to cultivate appreciation for a country that I knew very little about. And in the end, it also strengthened my relationship with my Dominican heritage. Thank you to all who helped make this trip happen and thank you to those who actively work to make sure more trips like this happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was so beautiful. Thank you.
So next, we'll hear from Ms. Bailey.
Greetings, fellow Boston public school educators, leaders, staff and students. I am so pleased to have the opportunity to work with Brittany Wheaton, our Director of Global Education for the past year. Approximately a year ago, an idea dropped into my heart that was so clear and unique that I had the, that I had to pursue the calling. I knew that I couldn't do it by myself, being such a new vocational educator and completely new to BPS. So I sought the help of more experienced educators. My coworker, Emily Medina, who is the Dental Assistant Instructor, agreed to go on this very intricate journey and introduced me to staff that could positively affect the outcome of this dream. So we were introduced to Brittany Wheaton by our previous grant writer, who had a great relationship with Brittany. I must say that the initial meeting with Brittany went off without a hitch and I was so pleased. She made us feel secure and expressed understanding of our desires, concerns and hesitations. Brittany has guided us through the foundations of this project and has always been available when we needed her most. She has not only been a great resource to our project and the betterment of our school, but she has also become a friend that I know I can, I can be personable with and express my dreams and visions with a passion. Because of Brittany's dedication, we are proud to announce that the Allied Health Team at Madison Park will be performing its first-ever health service learning trip abroad. We have the opportunity to teach the youth in the Dominican Republic some aspects of nursing and dental practices that pertain to their everyday lives. We will also have the opportunity to learn about DR's medical history and how medical services are accessed today. We leave for the Dominican Republic in nine days and I'm so humbled to say that we couldn't have done this without Brittany's amazing leadership skills and wealth of knowledge. So we just want to thank you so much, Brittany, and thank you, the school board, for everything that you've done for us at Madison. You know, being so new, it's, it was shocking at first, but it's just a beautiful experience and I'm glad we're going to get to go. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Open up to questions. Sorry, I know we're running out of time, but it's so much.
People have questions or?
I think it's very hard for school committee members to understand your department since we don't get to go on any of these trips. And I'm wondering how we get to go. Yeah, you need chaperones. And Ariana, thank you for the shout-out to Che Guevara by Sanomio. I just wanted to say I was glad to hear regarding systems and structures around equity because that was one of my questions. And I was curious about the schools that haven't participated, the schools that participate often and most, and if there is some kind of way to pair up some of the schools that don't participate with some of the ones that have been participating all the time to be able to kind of have trips together and maybe make that ease. You know, I, I think I continue to see some of the same schools and that always concerns me because obviously we want to make sure that it's an opportunity for, for every school. So I'm just wondering if you have more ideas around that, if you've given more thoughts around that in order to really be more equitable and more, I know that you're trying to, but I'm just wondering if you have more thoughts around that.
Yeah, I think my main focus has just been having the conversation. In going to, so I, I got to visit most of the middle and, and high schools that have not had trips. And in having conversations with the teachers who really wanted to have them, it was about leadership. It wasn't necessarily that the schools just don't want to do them. It was the chaperones not knowing if they can fundraise, not knowing if it was okay to ask students to take a two-thousand-dollar trip. And how do we ask that of families? How do I read through our forty-five-page circular that lets me know if, if this is something I even... this is something I even want to do? So I think, um, that's where I'm starting because the more teachers that we can have feeling empowered and inspired to do this work, um, then that's going to broaden our base of schools that are actually going. And, uh, one of the first steps that teachers take, um, is going to one of our, our mandatory trainings. This year, we had to offer two because we had so many teachers who were interested. So we trained forty teachers this year, um, many of which led trips this spring and many of which who are fundraising and will be leading trips that you'll be seeing next year. So kind of that, already we've seen so much growth. We've had fifteen new chaperones, um, who literally took the training last spring and were leading trips this spring. So, um, we just see that the conversation needs to happen. Um, and they need to feel empowered and, and they need to know their options. If you go online and you type in, "I want to take my students to travel," you might be presented with a vendor who says it's going to cost four thousand. But when you can, um, have a conversation with me, I can partner you with a nonprofit who's going to do that for half the cost and I'm going to help connect you with somebody who's done it. And those have been really, uh, effective strategies towards, towards meeting with exactly what you're saying.
And one of the things that Brittany has done a good job leading on is streamlining a number of the sort of logistical processes that are internal and also with, with all of you, which actually saves her a ton of time that she can then use to cultivate new schools, cultivate new trip leaders. Uh, like you, she just articulated, it's, there's a pipeline that can sometimes be eighteen months, uh, in duration and that she has to really keep track and usher people along that pipeline and with an eye towards the equity that is central to our goal.
And it also, if I can quickly add, um, sometimes we just have to go to the vendors that we use and say, because as a district, um, with all the trips included from our funders and the families, we spend close to a million dollars a year on travel. Families do that and the fundraising does that. Um, so when I go to one of our vendors, um, I said, you know, we want extended timelines to pay for things. Um, so now one of our vendors, um, allows us, uh, BPS students two to three-year-long payments. So students and teacher, um, particularly language teachers have incorporated this trip. They introduce it as a freshman. Students' parents are paying, um, thirty-five dollars a month for three years and then in their junior year, they'll be going somewhere to have a language immersion. So we, instead of having unrealistic expectations, because for the average person to travel, it's expensive no matter where you're at. So we have to meet families where they're at, also teach financial literacy along the way and, and work towards those trips. And that's a skill that, that will stay with them as well as just traveling.
This is such a great presentation and it is exciting to see how we are, um, training our students to be global citizens. So thank you for your work. I can only imagine the excitement when a student, you know, travels, um, to a new city and a new culture, um, what they're bringing back to the rest of their classroom experience as well. Um, so two questions. One, um, so with some of the places that students are traveling to and being that we live in such a global city, um, are there opportunities here in Boston to partner with, um, the specific, you know, cultures that the students will be visiting? Um, you know, if they're going to Costa Rica, if they're going to DR, um, knowing that there are large populations here in Boston, um, do you have partnership opportunities? What does that look like?
Yeah, we do. Um, if I can use our Quebec or our French, um, home stays and cultural exchanges, uh, we partnered with the French Cultural Center, um, who is actually giving classes to one of our groups, um, last year at the EMK, uh, be, preparing them for the language aspect and the conversations that they were going to have. Um, and they did a free ten-month French course, uh, with our students before they got to go off, um, to Quebec. Um, we work with nonprofit, a lot of the nonprofits that we work with, those are really, um, awesome partnerships because they follow the students, uh, for at least six months before they go on their trip. So it's not like you just, you're going there and here you are. Um, they're really preparing them for how to take it in. Um, and then there's, there's a lot of you, so then we have unique partnerships like BuildOn, um, who I think you guys are all familiar with, who BuildOn is incorporated in the School Day at CASH and, um, now at the, uh, at the Berk. So the Berk just has a, a new chapter this year. And so they're taking a course about service learning, uh, before they get there because also we want to be careful about service learning not just being, you know, charity work, um, but really kind of, um, becoming a part of who you are in service. So they're really unique partnerships, but we do have opportunities to do that and I'm always looking for more.
And that's great to hear that, um, you're being creative and innovative with some of the unique partnerships because I think it is, um, I think it's critical for students to know that their culture is around them and that they can engage here and, you know, overseas and elsewhere as well. Um, so that's, that's helpful information. My second question is, um, around the, the parent engagement, maybe some of the anxiety-reducing, you know, um, moments. What strategies do you have in place to, um, really train and engage parents to understand the global citizenship of their child?
Yeah.
Beyond just, to your point earlier, the financial literacy, things of that nature?
Yeah, I would say, one of the biggest, so when I, I go to, I make a, um, a point to go to every single pre-departure meeting or parent meeting at each school. And the biggest question, the first question I always get is, "Are you going to keep my child safe?" Parents want to know that and I think one of the biggest investments we've made as a district is having a travel insurance policy and one of the best. Um, and we switched this year because we needed a insurance company that would better meet our, the, the needs of our, um, student population, specifically in regards to mental health support too. Um, and so when we can hand parents a travel insurance policy and say, "Your student is protected medically, environmentally, for political evacuation, if they lose their luggage, if they lose their passport," um, that whole wall goes down. And, um, there's like this, this energy that comes in the room where they're like, "Okay, I think, I think, I, I think I can do this." And then that kind of opens a door to, um, a lot of the schools will have potlucks the night or two nights before, uh, the students come in. Parents cook food, um, that their children can sell, um, as fundraising tactics. And so I think, um, parents become more engaged and they're willing to basically do anything throughout the, the process leading up to the trips, um, because they feel like their children are in good hands. And that, I would say that's the biggest feature in terms of creating that, to that.
It does answer it. Um, even prior to the departure process, this type of presentation, is it ever presented to parents? Teaching about the, the global experience, the global culture, the value add?
So it's mandatory that each trip has two parent meetings. So the first parent meeting, I usually go to one of them. Um, and then we're, everything that we presented to you tonight, um, and every logistical detail about the trip is presented and they are very vibrant meetings. Um, parents want to know everything and we're happy to, to offer answers or solutions. Um, you know, they, they call us and let us know the specific needs of their children. We get really cool emails, like just, "My son's not going to tell you, but he's a sleepwalker. So can you put him with somebody who's an easy sleeper?" So we deal with the, the biggest details down to the little details. Um, we, uh, we like to tell parents, "Let us know if your child is one who gets hangry," which is a popular term we use. It's hungry and angry. So we work with parents to make sure they're packing them snacks and, and that's, they love making care packages for every parent makes a, so I think when you help them do those small things, um, they all really matter.
Right, right. Thank you.
Thank you, Dean Coleman, and, uh, thank you for the presentation tonight. Um, most of my questions have already been answered and, um, I really appreciate you going into a little bit further detail about, um, the way that you help, uh, manage risk with, um, our parents. I, I know that can be a concerning issue. Um, I just wanted to, um, make an additional comment, uh, speaking of someone who never left this country until he was twenty-two years old, I, I think it's fantastic that, um, you're, uh, offering these opportunities to, uh, to children as young as sixth grade, uh, to, uh, to travel abroad and, and, uh, open up their experiences to, uh, how people live across the world. I, I think it's a very powerful, uh, vehicle and, and, you know, just hearing, um, from, uh, Ms. Dixon Ortiz earlier, talk about her experience and, and so eloquently, I might add, um, it's, um, it's really great that we're doing this and I, I encourage you to keep it up with, uh, the expansion of the program and, and the expansion of the program to specifically, uh, those kids that, um, have, wouldn't otherwise have that opportunity to get out of the country. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Um, a couple of questions. Um, about the Cuba trip, was the Cuba trip just for Boston Latin Academy or was it district-wide?
Yes, it was district-wide. So it was, um, any student in BPS who is engaged in the arts or even an art enthusiast, that's how they identified. You got to apply for the, uh, program and then, uh, we had a huge response and then we had a, an application process. So that was in partnership with the arts department.
Are there other district-wide travel opportunities like that, particularly for kids who are in schools that are not yet offering their own trips?
Yeah, um, we're working on that. That was, um, our only district-wide trip, but next year we have our district-wide Ghana trip. Um, so that's open to any teacher and student who wants to go on the trip. Um, we're, I think, you know, having district-wide trips just makes sense and you don't have to be all at one school to travel. So we're going to be, um, making sure that we do a lot more of that.
Yeah, is there ever opportunity for a student to go on a trip of a school that is not their home school now or is it just pretty much your own school?
Currently, no. Uh, just because we do have an emphasis on a chaperone-to-student relationship building before, uh, you go. Um, but, uh, so from the district level, we can do that because we usually have one-point person who's getting to know the students before, but it's kind of, uh, we don't currently allow students from other schools to join, um, on another trip.
What kinds of things are you doing at the school level to include, to encourage students who might not feel that travel's for them or that they're ready to travel to consider participating? Particularly as you look at the issues around equity and who is and who isn't traveling?
Yeah, I think, um, making our students the face of travel is just it. Um, I think that the kids are over it in terms of hearing the teachers say, "Let's go build schools in Costa Rica." You hear it all the time. Um, but instead having the students who are having the panels and info sessions, um, uh, at one school, one of the students was just posting random pictures from their trip all around the school and telling kids, "If you're interested in this picture, meet here at three o'clock." And that was their info session and they had a huge response. So making them the face of travel and, and when they see that students who look like them are the ones doing it. And then we've also implemented, um, advertising strategies that help teachers, uh, have a further reach. So I've implemented things where I discourage teachers from posting the price of the trip on a poster. The trip, the wording then should be, "If you want to come, show up at the meeting, we're going to make sure that we all get to." So certain wording and messaging is really a part of, of, uh, the, the advertising strategies as well.
I'm not quite sure how to say my next question, but given the fact that we know that we have some children that are undocumented and would not be able to travel, are there domestic travel opportunities for other students so that everybody gets some type of tr- travel experience if they'd like to participate in one?
Yeah, so that's one of the awesome things about, and that's something I do want to focus on, um, because we, you know, even, um, it, when we went away to Cuba, I had a, a Mexican student and we were trying to get back in and they were extremely nervous and so there's a lot of dynamics now in, in regards to that. Um, but one of, um, there was something you said, what's the, the last thing you said?
About just domestic travel opportunities?
Yes, so, um, that's the beauty of home stays too. Sometimes for religious reasons and personal reasons at home, parents don't allow their students to go off and do home stays, but they're so willing to host a student. So you can still host an international student and not necessarily go. You can join affinity groups after school. Um, you can, um, there's a lot of global, uh, that's why it's so vast, so you can join a, um, a model UN course, um, at your school. So there's other ways that we can encourage them to still be a part of that global conversation without necessarily going. And another big push that I've had is traveling domestically. Like, let's go to New York. Uh, we've had, uh, two trips, go to New Orleans this, um, past April vacation. We had people go into Vermont, New Hampshire, into the Blue Hills to hike. So i- in, in terms of being global, the first step sometimes is just getting out of the city. So some parents will say no to China, but yes to New York and we make sure that those opportunities are happening.
And we just recently partnered with, uh, the Office of Instructional Technology to purchase a 3D, uh, sorry, a 360 camera. So something that could be deployed with a group going abroad that can then be rendered into 3D video. And if you've seen the VR rigs that are, you know, they can be, you can use a cellphone to create an immersive experience and, uh, Google actually now has programs called Google Expeditions where you can create learning arcs and experiences that align to the video that you're seeing. And so we've been talking about that and, uh, will continue to explore that partnership and send some of that technology with students that can go so that students back here can have that, can have some version of that experience.
Yes, and we're, I mean, we used to say pen pals, but now you can have a video pal and a lot of teachers do, um, have that interface between their classroom and a sister school and another community. So there, there's a, a lot of different ways and I'm actually looking forward to more ways that we can find, um, those opportunities for students who can't necessarily travel.
Thanks so much.
Thank you. And thank you for your questions earlier this year too, around, um, the demographic of student travelers and everything. Thank you.
Thanks a lot for your presentation. It was, it's really a wonderful, wonderful program. Um, my question is, is a couple of questions. One of them is about your strategies for attracting boys to, um, to travel. What, what are the barriers? What is it that you're finding are, are the barriers and what kinds of, you know, um, strategies you're, you're following to try to attract them?
Yeah, I think, um, I learned a lot in my partnership with OAG and the Ten Boys Initiative. And, um, originally, Don Corminas, he came to me and said, "I want to take all the boys somewhere." And I'm like, bringing up all these ideas and things and he's like, "No, that's not where they want to go." And that was amazing for me to hear. Um, they, there's something about travel where you actually have to be vulnerable to and to go somewhere new and to be uncomfortable and, and be unsure, um, were things that came up in our conversation and Don Cor really helped me understand that. Let's, let's look at if we can do exchanges between sports. Can we have a basketball tournament in this country? Can we do a soccer tournament, um, at an orphanage in this country? Um, and then, so, and that's how we came about our Ghana trip because he saw a photo that I had of me taking a group and they, we had a soccer tournament at, at one of the orphanages. And so looking at, just figuring out what the guys want to do, so that's where I steer a lot of the, the chaperones from not where you want to go. You're facilitating an experience. Let's, let's do a poll. Um, I love the Charleston High model, um, that has been going on for about a decade now and every year they fundraise a lump sum of money. They have no idea where they're going. And then they look at the numbers and they say, "This is what we have. Let's pick five countries that are going to be, be the most affordable and then we're going to vote on it." So sometimes just, you know, doing things like that and then, um, there's several diff- and so now we have the data this year, which we've never had before and I was able to identify that most of the boys went on service learning trips. They weren't cultural immersion trips, they weren't home stays and they weren't language immersion trips. They wanted to do something active, they wanted to go and serve. So that's going to now help me figure out what I need to, and already has, what we need to do next year to make sure that we keep that number rising.
The, the other one, my other question is about students that are immigrants that are coming here, not necessarily undocumented, but that may be English language learners. Have you made any effort to try to maybe have them go back to, you know, where they, they've been or going to another country in the, you know, close by in Asia or Latin America? Is there any effort to try to get English language learners involved?
Um, I think the effort to get them involved is just embedded in what we do, but we haven't specifically looked at, um, programs that bring students back to, you know, wherever their native land is, which, and, but kind of the idea, um, with our Ghana trip too, we wanted to do something, um, for some of our, we heard the, the, the demand for our students to, to take us back to Africa, take us back to our homeland. And, um, in looking at the whole diaspora of where a lot of our black students come from, um, they want to go back to this as a homeland. Um, and homeland means something different to even our English language learners and Ariana, to her, that meant going back to art. And, um, but I, I, I would love to also look into and work with teachers who a- also want to, uh, bring students back. Um, I think that's a, that's a great theme.
And we, we've tried to do that at UMass Boston, trying to get, um, students to go and do projects in either the, the country that they left and, and want to go back to or, you know, countries nearby, like she went to Cuba, but, you know, Dominican Republic is right next door. You know what I mean? So that there's, there's, you know, some connection and, um- And, and it usually is a very moving and very wonderful experience for students. Finally, I wanted to ask you about the hosting of international students. Is there, is there an active recruitment of that? Or how, you know, how do people, how can teachers and school committee members participate in hosting international students?
Yeah, so we have some new and some longstanding home stay opportunities. And then we just get approached by sister cities and different agencies that are looking, hey, I have a, a school in the Netherlands. They want to do this. Do you have a school who would want to partner? And then that's when I go out to our, our BPS listservs and the network of teachers that I know and emailing principals, do you want to do this? And then typically we're able to find a school that wants to host students. And then quickly, because I just thought of something, the Muniz, they went back to Cuba in February as well and, and paid tribute to Margarita Muniz. And that was their going back trip. And some of the students on that trip were Cuban. And it meant a lot to spend time with the Muniz family. And that was a powerful trip that happened that kind of goes along with what you're feeling.
I also wanted to say something to Ariana. Soy cubana. You touched my heart.
We loved Cuba.
I said, no, I'm Cuban. You touched my heart.
We loved Cuba.
Thank you very much. This is a wonderful presentation.
So we'll move on to our final report this evening. Revisions to the District Wellness Policy. This time I'd like to invite Assistant Superintendent of Social Emotional Learning, Amalia Nieves, and Executive Director of Wellness, Jill Carter, to please step forward their presentation. But first I'd like to invite Dr. Superintendent Chang to give opening remarks.
Thank you so much this evening, Dr. Amalia Nieves and Jill Carter of the Office of Social Emotional Learning and Wellness. They are back this time to present to the School Committee recommendations, updates to the District Wellness Policy. In a previous school committee meeting this year, they presented, have an update on the data from this year, actually from previous, from last year. This time they are presenting to you some revisions and they are seeking approval by the School Committee on June 21st of these revisions. The federal government does require BPS to revise its wellness policy by June 30th. So it is important that we get this approved in the next school committee meeting. The recommended revisions are a result of an iterative editing process led by the District Wellness Council Subcommittee Co-Chairs. Involve district leaders, school leaders, school-based staff, community partners. And we also sought feedback from the BPS students and families and we're bringing these to you.
Do you remember what, when was it that they made their presentation?
April.
In April?
April.
Okay, because I couldn't.
April 5th, I think.
April 5th, okay.
Thank you so much. I want to turn it over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Chang. Good evening, Vice Chair Coleman, Superintendent Chang, and School Committee Members. As promised back on April 5th, we are here to present the District Wellness Council's recommended revisions to the District Wellness Policy. School Committee Members should have received a memo from me detailing the federal requirements for the update to the policy and summarizing the recommended revisions. You also should have received the draft of the revised policy language. We are presenting the report on behalf of the District Wellness Council. Presenting with me again is Jill Carter, Executive Director of the Office of Social Emotional Learning and Wellness and who is also co-chair of the District Wellness Council Policy Subcommittee. And also presenting with us this evening is Marika Lear, Assistant Director of Wellness Policy and Promotions in the Health and Wellness Department. I want to thank all of the members of the District Wellness Committee and the Subcommittee Co-Chairs for leading this involved process. I'd like to give a special thanks to Dr. Jennifer Jaeger, who's here in the audience tonight, who is the interim Medical Director at the Boston Public Health Commission for stepping up to co-chair the committee with me. And she's already been a great partner in this work. We're also grateful to School Committee Member Regina Robinson for participating on the council as well. The Boston Public Schools actively promotes the social, emotional, and physical wellness of all students to support both their healthy development and readiness to learn. As such, BPS strives to be one of the healthiest school districts in the country. The District Wellness Policy is the roadmap to help achieve that mission. Research clearly indicates that health inequities interfere with learning and disproportionately impact low-income youth of color. Addressing the physical, social, and emotional wellness of students is essential to closing the opportunity and achievement gaps. We know that healthy kids are better learners and that the work around this policy also aligns to our essentials for instructional equity, particularly as it relates to creating safe, healthy, and sustaining learning environments. Our main objective for this evening's presentation is to present the District Wellness Council's recommended revisions to the current wellness policy for a vote by the School Committee as Dr. Chang mentioned on June 21st. Jill will now review the federal requirements and the policy revisions conducted by the District Wellness Council. But before I do that, I want to recognize the members of the District Wellness Committee who are in the audience. If I can ask them just to stand and be recognized.
Okay, our current policy is recognized nationally as one of the most comprehensive policies, calling out eight policy components to address the physical, social, emotional, and emotional wellness of our students. It is aligned with the whole school, whole community, whole child model and is an umbrella policy that aims to coordinate the implementation of many existing wellness-related policies in the district. BPS initially approved the District Wellness Policy in 2006 and the policy was last updated in June of 2013. On July 29th, 2016, the USDA finalized regulations for wellness policies established by school districts. And that final rule requires BPS to develop a revised district wellness policy during this school year. The District Wellness Council has taken this opportunity to review and recommend revisions to the policy, making sure that it is in compliance with federal and state requirements and that it reflects current district initiatives and research-based evidence. BPS must fully comply with the requirements of the final rule by June 30th, 2017. Thus, we are bringing these recommendations before you for your approval. As Dr. Chang referenced in his introduction, the policy revision recommendations are a result of an iterative and collaborative feedback process and editing process between the District Wellness Council-appointed members, which are listed on the slide, council subcommittees, and other community members. Additionally, we collected feedback from district leaders, school-based staff, community partners, and we met with Boston Student Advisory Council, the Special Education Parent Advisory Council, and Citywide Parent Council to inform these revisions. The District Wellness Council members finally approved these recommendations that we're bringing before you. And I'd like now to review the changes required by the federal regulations and briefly touch on the recommendation changes for each of the additional policy areas. So the federal required revisions include writing policy language for public participation in policy development, policy evaluation and documentation, and ensuring public awareness of and access to the policy, policy updates, and the annual report. Many of these practices are currently being implemented in the Boston Public Schools through the implementation guidelines in our circular, but they are now required to be part of the policy language. The requirements, additionally, the requirements also asked us to develop new policy calling out the leadership responsibilities for compliance of the policy. And we also were required to establish a food and beverage marketing policy. With that, I'm going to turn over to Marika so that she can give you a brief overview on the recommended revisions to the specific policy areas.
Thank you. So many of the recommended revisions that you'll see in the draft were made to the policy to improve the clarity of the current policy language based on our experience with implementing this policy in the schools, as well as to add visionary language that connects each of the policy areas to the health and wellness of the students. So I'll be going through, quickly through seven policy areas and highlighting the major changes as well as acknowledging the people who led this work, starting with cultural proficiency. This section was rewritten with the Subcommittee Chair Jody Elge, who's the Senior Director of Safe and Welcoming Schools, and with the input of staff from the Offices of Equity, Engagement, and Opportunity and Achievement Gaps. In our recommendations, we clarify the definition of cultural proficiency, including culturally and linguistically sustaining practices. And we align the policy area with current district initiatives and the goals that are outlined in the Opportunity and Achievement Gap Policy. The School Food and Nutrition Promotion Subcommittee is led by Co-Chairs Kelly Walsh, the FNS Nutrition Manager, and Dr. Juliana Cohen, who is the Assistant Professor at Merrimack College and an adjunct Assistant Professor at the Harvard School of Public Health. We worked with Laura Benavides, the Executive Director of FNS, to add visionary language and a commitment to developing and implementing BPS school meals nutritional standards. Additionally, we are recommending updating this section to include language from the water policy, food safety regulations, and the competitive food and beverage guidelines in order to address the multiple dimensions of creating a healthy school food environment. The Comprehensive Physical Activity and Physical Education Subcommittee is chaired by Jessica Green, the BPS Physical Education Director, and Dr. Angie Craddock, Senior Research Scientist and Deputy Director at the Harvard Prevention Research Center. In addition to clarifying the language in the policy, the District Wellness Council recommends adding a required 20-minute minimum to the existing recess requirement for grades pre-K through eight. We also established a commitment to supporting and promoting safe and physically active transportation to and from school. Pat Santin is the Health Education Director and Dr. Sarah Benes is a lecturer and Senior Director of the Graduate Studies in Health Education at Merrimack College. And they co-chair the Comprehensive Health Education Subcommittee. The District Wellness Council recommends policy language clarification using licensed health education teachers rather than certified. And we recommend specifying the use of the healthy and safe body unit for elementary schools. Catherine Walsh is the BPS Sustainability and Environmental Resources Manager and Tolly Graham, the Healthy Schools Coordinator for MASCOSH, co-chair the Healthy School Environment Subcommittee. In this policy area, we recommend clarifying the language about indoor air quality and adding language about providing sanitary and accessible bathrooms in all schools. Additionally, we recommend calling out the Massachusetts Regulations Regarding Idling of Motor Vehicles and Buses on School Property. The Safe and Supportive Schools Subcommittee is co-chaired by Andrea Amador, the Senior Director of Behavioral Health Services, and Deborah Collins-Gusby, Co-Executive Director of Casa Mirna. We recommend identifying the staff that participate in student support teams, committing to developing and implementing social, emotional learning standards, and specifying the multi-tiered systems of support as the district's framework for support services. Finally, the Health Services Subcommittee is co-chaired by Maureen Stark, the Senior Director of Health Services, and Maureen Scott, former Director of Clinical Services and School-Based Health Program at the Boston Public Health Commission, who is now retiring, who's now retired. We recommend that the policy language reflect the full breadth of the work done by school nurses and health services. We also recommend clarifying the Massachusetts Confidentiality Law related to adolescent health services and updating the condom accessibility section to reflect current practices and guidelines, including requiring condom accessibility teams in each high school.
For next steps, we ask the School Committee Members to review the recommended policy language and we will incorporate any School Committee feedback. Again, as we mentioned earlier, we'll be back here on June 21st for a School Committee vote on approval of the revisions. Once the policy is approved, the District Wellness Council will update the monitoring and evaluation plan, incorporating your feedback from our April presentation. The Council will develop a wellness action plan for school year 1718, including steps to communicate the updated policy to schools, families, and students, and publishing the new wellness policy circular. We now welcome your questions regarding the proposed revisions.
Thank you, Dean Coleman. Thank you, all the presenters tonight. Appreciate, as always, your comprehensive approach, both to the policy and the presentation you've given us. So I wanted to just take a quick moment, I wanted to reiterate some of the highlights you noted in your presentation. Among them, some of the new features of the policy, including the 20-minute minimum on recess, the clean food policy, the, the annual environmental audits. These are all great additions to the policy. What I wanted to understand however though was, to what extent are the additions that you've made to the policy, new policies themselves versus incorporations or other sort of connections being made to existing district policy?
So for most of the, for most of the changes, they are calling out links to existing policy. The, one exception is the recess, the number of minutes in recess. We don't have that in policy elsewhere, so that is, this would be creating. We have a requirement in the wellness policy for recess in grades K to eight. But it doesn't stipulate minutes, so that, that's that. There are a few other places, like adding a requirement for development of social, emotional learning standards. That's also something that we would be adding to policy for the first time. It's work that's already underway in the district and is a priority for us. I think those are kind of some of the two ones, the two that I, that come to mind. I could speak to some others if you want me to go further. But mostly, those are the two that I, that come to mind as the most significant.
And neither of those were informed by the federal guidance?
Correct.
Okay, so I guess the question, the primary question I would have would be around the research, excuse me, the recess minimum. And I'm wondering where that's in, how this is informed by either studies or best practices or anything you could provide to give us a little bit more of an understanding of how you arrived at the 20-minute recommendation?
So there's currently a requirement in the wellness policy for schools in grades K to eight to get 150 minutes of physical activity. And we have some minute requirements around physical education. So let me just sort of back up from where do we get to these numbers? Nationally and best practice, scientists tell us that students really need 60 minutes of physical activity a day. And the requirements are that they get 30 minutes of those in school. So in our policy, we've tried, we've targeted the 150 minutes, assuming you're going to have 30 minutes of physical activity on all five days of school. And that 150 minutes can be made up of physical education, recess, movement breaks, learning that integrates movement into it. We do have a requirement of, of the 150 minutes. We want there to be 45 minutes of the, the policy. The policy already requires 45 minutes of physical education in the elementary grades, or I should say K to eight, with a recommendation of 80 minutes. That was based on June, the 2013. And we also have semester of physical education per high school years. The reason why the calling out of the 20 minutes of recess is we wanted to be clear sort of what we were targeting on a daily basis for recess. I can tell you where we currently are at with, we already collect data on recess. We know that 99% of elementary schools, K to five, are offering recess for all students. And we know that at the middle school grades and grades six to eight, 52 to 57%, depending on the grade, are already doing recess. But again, we want to clarify the minutes because we feel like that's a good amount of time for kids to actually be engaged and maybe get some moderate to vigorous physical activity in there for that amount of time, so.
And in, of those schools where you know recess time do currently exist, do you have a measurement as to how much time is currently being spent at recess, or is that not something that you've measured to date?
We are, we do have a profile survey, which is a principal survey. We also do a physical education teacher survey where we are asking about the number of minutes they are currently offering. And so we do have a sort of, if you will, baseline on where we are, and we do think that this is a good, that most schools are doing around 20 minutes, but not all. And so this is just setting a target. These are CDC national standards, recommendations, so we're just trying to call that out for schools to give them that kind of guideline.
And the minute measurement that you have, that correlates to recess itself or to the 150 minutes of physical activity per week?
So we have it broken out. So we have, we can, we could, in the annual report we presented, you can actually see, I could point you to it if you wanted to, graphs that show how much time people are spending in each component of the comprehensive physical activity program.
Okay, I'll take another look at that. Thank you very much.
Okay. Happy.
Ms. Dabo?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, guys. Following up on the recess question, and it may be beyond your purview, but I think for me, it's not just about adding minutes. So I have a second grader, and I'm very well aware of recess time and what that means for different types of children. And so I'm just wondering about what recess looks like and what are the supports, because again, there's different kinds of kids. And as we all know, the bus in recess can make or break the day, and so I'm just wondering what happens during recess, especially in the early grades. Are we providing support to teach children how to play together and all of that? And I suppose that fits with SEL, but I'd be really curious about that. If we're adding more, how do we ensure that's actually a great experience for our students?
Good question, and we definitely recognize that more is not necessarily better if it's not good quality and that students aren't, you know, moving back to class ready to learn. So, so we have several different ways that we're addressing that. One is we have a great partnership with Playworks, which I'm sure a lot of the folks on the committee are familiar with, the number of schools that they work with. They provide three different strategies for bringing some training around recess to schools. They either have full-time coaches that are doing recess and game time for students, or they have a team-up program, which is a new strategy where they, for sort of a lesser cost, will develop the capacity of schools. They are also working with us to talk about how they can bring more professional development to schools that aren't able to buy into those higher levels of capacity-building strategies. And definitely essential to this whole piece is, it's not just about, it's about increasing the amount of activity, making sure that students have things that they like to do at recess, but there's also this social-emotional component to it. And Playworks is, you know, really keyed into that and works closely, and I know has communicated with Behavioral Health Services Department and in the past with us. So we, we want to continue to build that connection and ensure that the skills that they're learning around social-emotional learning in the classroom are aligned with what they're learning or what they're using and practicing out on the playground.
Thank you. I'm the pain-in-the-butt parent. I'll just say that my daughter's school worked with one of those organizations, and I was not very happy. So I would just only say that I think, I don't know what the process is for also making, assuring that our partners, that we're getting the most out of our partners. And so if we're spending money on our partners, that we make sure that they're really providing quality staff and quality time, as you said. My other question is on the CP piece. I was just curious, and I might be getting too deep, on the last point in terms of the assessment of each school, and how will that be tracked? So the established schools, which I don't know what that means, will assess their policies, practices, physical environments, curriculum materials. How, how will we look at that? How will that be tracked? Will each school be?
So the metric for, for the cultural proficiency piece? Marika, I don't know if you want to add to that, or if that's something that you feel like we can comment on at this point?
A lot of that language was to align with the, the goals that are outlined in the OAG policy that talk about those different measurements. And so as we kind of move into the, about creating the monitoring and evaluation plan, we would be working closely with, with that office to figure out what types of data we could collect for that. But we really felt it was important to, to link to the work that was going on in that office so that it really drew cultural proficiency out for the wellness councils as something that we see as very integral to the health and wellness of the students.
Mm-hmm.
No, I, I agree.
I know you know.
I agree.
No, I was just wondering if you had given some thought to how, and I don't know what established schools mean?
Oh, just to say that we, we established, like, in the policy, we established language that would, that would, would require the wellness councils to have some sort of assessment of the different components around cultural proficiency.
No, I totally agree. And then my last question, I am just curious, where, where does the piece, or maybe it doesn't fit in here, is all of the work that has been done as of late for undocumented students and families, when we talk about safe and supportive schools, does, how does that fit in here, or doesn't, maybe it's just, I'm, I'm just not sure, does it, does it lap in, or should it be separate?
Well, I would think that the work around safe and supportive schools, because we're addressing it through a multi-tiered system of support, that it would address the needs of that group of students. Are you asking us that you'd like to see it more called out?
Yes, thank you for that translation. That's really good.
I think, if I could just add, if we look at the actual language, and this is on page nine of 10 of the document where we actually gave you the language, in the middle of the first paragraph under safe and supportive schools, it says, "Special attention will be given to vulnerable student populations, including but not limited to LGBTQ students, immigrant students, expectant and parenting students, court-involved students, students experiencing homeless, and students experiencing trauma." So it definitely is our goal to try to connect that. Again, I think our evaluation plan.
If I may, let's go back, revisit the new policies we've put in place to support immigrant students and see how that, this can be integrated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Yurate?
I'll, thank you much for this. I'll follow up on Alex's concern because it was also on my list, and I think related to that is, was sort of, when you mentioned the list of areas or centers within the district that were working with you, one of them, one that was not mentioned was the Office of English Language Learners. So I was wondering, why have they not participated? They have been the owners of the, of the policy around immigrant students, but in general, I think I'm, my concern is how do they interact with you on this, particularly around areas related to cultural proficiency, language capacity, et cetera. The reason that I'm asking that is that I know that there, you really, the district really does not have the language ability to provide a lot of services for children that are English language learners. So I, I was wondering why there's not more directive language here in relationship to the hiring of, of staff that is, that has the capacity to communicate with children of different languages? You have content on areas related to professional development, but I think that it's more than professional development that you're looking for, it's really filling the, you know, filling your, your, you know, sort of building the capacity of the district to serve what is now about one-third of the student body. Okay? So if you could deal with the issue of how you're interacting with the Office of English Language Learners, with the needs of English language learners, and why is there not any mention of them anywhere in here?
I think that's a great point, and I know that Dr. Sparza and I work very closely together on many efforts. I just think we need to call it out.
One quick clarification.
But I want to make sure that it gets in, okay?
Yeah, we will make sure that happens, Dr. Yurate. I just want to clarify a statement you made. You said the district was not providing any services for OELs.
Oh, no, no, I said that there's not capacity to provide for every language, you know, the kinds of services that are being put on here, that are being mentioned here.
Okay, I think we should, what we will note, and I know that Dr. Sparza shared this last week or two or three weeks ago, the work that she has done to actually increase significantly the capacity to provide language supports for parents and students. So we will make sure that it becomes embedded in this policy as well, but I just want to publicly say that we do, it's not that we don't provide any, we don't have 100%, we have 80 different languages, but we are exploring more innovative approaches to make sure that we are meeting the needs of parents, so.
Well, the thing is that, you know, in here, this is not about parents. This is about mental health, capacity of the district.
That's right.
That's a very specialized type of ability, and that requires professional intervention by professionals that can actually communicate with students. So that, again, I mean, it's not about a translator coming in, it's about having the capacity to really, so that, that's, that's the capacity that I think, you know. So I guess my question is, put it in here somewhere, because it's one-third of your student body.
Yep.
That's right. Thank you for that feedback. It's very important.
Yep.
Okay, another, in another area, under healthy school environment, please include water quality.
Good. I think, I believe it's there, but we can double-check on that and call it out.
It's not, it's not.
It's in food and nutrition, right?
If you look, it's, it's in the second sentence, under healthy school environment, it does call out indoor air quality and water quality.
Where? In here?
Yep, on page eight of 10.
And it's under the food and nutrition.
Oh, and that, okay. And I'm looking at this, okay.
And, yeah, page eight of 10, fourth line, it's not bolded because it was in the previous policy, so it's not a new piece, but.
Okay. Just given.
Yes.
Okay, I don't want to underscore the point, but I think we should make sure. Under health services, yeah?
Oh, I also just wanted to say that within the Healthy School Environment Policy Section, we call out, again, including but not limited to, and then list BPS policies as well as the state and federal regulations, and the BPS water policies also under that list.
Okay, all right. Under health services, okay, and this goes back to some of the, the thinking that I think is being, you know, that we're trying to get to, which is what is the minimal requirements? What, what does each school require? And so I wanted your thinking in relationship to nurses and these, that, you know, that level of services. This goes back to some of the, that, you know, we're all trying to understand what is sort of the minimal requirements in schools. And here, you, you know, you're talking about the scope of work done by nurses when we know that not all schools have nurses. So are you, is that something that, if you want some language on that, that there would be some attention to increasing the capacity of schools in this area?
So I'll take that. I think the work around the district wellness policy is everyone's work. And, and so when we look at this model here, we are talking about the eight different areas, so there are many different players involved in making this policy come to life, and school nurses are definitely one group that are critical to doing this work. So are our school psychologists, so our guidance counselors, so our health teachers, our physical education teachers. So when we come to this approach, it's that we have many hands on deck to do this work. And while we certainly value, and we know the importance of having nurses, it's the same that holds true for our school psychologists, phys ed teachers, health ed teachers, et cetera.
But you mentioned them here by name. I mean, you mentioned here, school nurses and the scope of work, and it sort of caught my eye because I know that that's an area that is, where we have, you know, we don't have full capacity either. So I was wondering whether it could be, you know, some language that talks about the value of that particular group of people in relationship to school wellness.
We can, we can definitely look closer. I think that that was actually part of the intention, was we actually added in language about the roles that nurses play.
Okay.
And we did that in the safe and supportive environment to make sure that everybody recognized the various people that play a role in the safe and supportive environment. I think in terms of, we, we could look at metrics that could help us measure the ability for schools to implement these pieces. So, you know, the, the, the number of schools or the percentage of schools that are hitting particular targets, so that over time, we could be looking at goals for each section of the policy. I mean, we also have to think about custodians and food service staff and transportation, you know, it really does, this policy requires a real team, and so tracking this ability of schools to actually, you know, address this is a good, you know, it's a good piece of, thing to, a good piece of advice to consider as we're moving forward with the developing the evaluation plan, so.
I, I, I agree, and I think that this also goes back to, so your, your fourth dot in cultural proficiency. I mean, in, who is, who is going to take care of not only documenting cultural proficiency, but documenting everything else that you have in here? Because, you know, one thing is, the paper will hold everything, you know? We can all write wonderful, wonderfully. I am worried about what is actually happening at the school level. And, and that, you know, sort of narrowing the gap between the narrative and the, and the reality is important. So I was wondering, you know, whether you could, you know, if you feel that you need that capacity, that, you know, then, you know, make it part of what you're trying to do in this, in this work as well.
Okay, and in the cultural proficiency piece specifically?
And cultural proficiency in, you know, the other, the nursing, the capacity, the person power to do this work. And, and the reason is that it's critical. I think you, you, you make a tremendous case for the importance of it, but we know that these are not, you know, when, when we get a budget, some of these are the soft areas that get, you know, that, that, you know, that get sort of pushed aside for the core work of, of the schools, and that, and that's a problem, and that's what I'm trying to deal with, to understand.
Ms. Jay Robson?
Yes, just have one question. I want to find out a little bit more about the school-based wellness councils. It says that they're required. Do all schools have them?
That's a good question. They are required, and they, they have to develop a wellness action plan that is part of the quality school plan. And we do have a tool to assess wellness, you know, how many schools are developing wellness action plans. I think we want to improve on our metrics there because we, you know, you can, you can have a list of people that you're saying is doing your wellness action plan, and, but what's the functionality of the councils? And so to your, to your, to answer your question, I don't think that all schools do have a wellness council, at least in our current metric of the number that are handing in wellness action plans. We're not getting wellness action plans from all schools. So that's something that we really feel like is an important piece of improvement, because if you don't have because if you don't have a council, then how are you working as a team to implement such a complex, um, you know, set of requirements?
Isn't it required that the principal or the school leader do this?
Be on it, yes.
And so what are the repercussions if it doesn't happen? I mean, this, as we're saying, this is a significant piece of what kids need to have healthy environments, and we're talking about achievement gaps, et cetera, some of our policies create them. I mean, if we're not monitoring these things consistently by school.
Right.
Kids suffer.
We will continue to work with the instructional and operational superintendents, and actually that's what the policy does, is call out, um, who's sort of helping with the accountability side of this. Um, I think what we've done in the past is to try to work on both the positive, the carrots, if you will, and the rewards, and the recognizing, like we did at our re- recent wellness summit, where we had some of the best schools that are doing amazing things, uh, and wellness being, receiving awards, and then also working to share their expertise with other schools. So that's the positive, but then on the other side, we're also trying to build better tools and capacity supports for wellness councils, because we know we have to help them through this process. So that's something that we were able to improve this year, and we hope that when we come back to you with our next annual report that's quantitative, that we will be able to show you some improvement.
Yeah, so be interested in.
I'm, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I said, be interested in looking at schools and where they are in terms of their tiers and how their kids are doing, and whether or not they are implementing these policies.
I'm going to encourage our team to make sure we're very clear about the data and not speculate, and based on the data, do exactly what you said, is tier our support for schools and focus on capacity building rather than just leading with accountability.
Yep.
So that's what we're going to ask us to do, and then at a later time, we can get a more updated report on, on these teams to the school committee.
And, and I can just add the specifics of the data, less than 15, 16, 60% of schools submitted a wellness action plan.
Thank you.
Sixty?
Sixty percent submitted a wellness action plan, so.
You don't have to answer that, I'd be interested in knowing at the 40% of schools, their relationship to our tiered system.
Yep.
So we're obviously arguing that, um, the ability to have a fully staffed and functioning office around these issues is related to performance, so I'm wondering if our, if it's more likely that our low-performing schools are part of the 60% or the 40%? And so that can help us target some interventions. You don't have to get that in right now.
No, that's okay, yeah.
Ms. Robinson?
So I, um, wanted to just kind of underscore the great work as a member of this team. Um, I have an internal kind of perspective, um, and I'm glad that, Ms. Robinson, you asked the question about what's happening on the local school, the individual school level, because the most recent event really did highlight the bright spots in the district, um, and so I, it's, I'm heartened to hear about the 60%, um, and we do want to note that the 40%, you know, if there's a custodian and there's a phys ed teacher and there, you know, there should be a wellness action plan. I think we all realize that. So I'm encouraged, Dr. Chang, that you are really wanting to kind of press forward and not just look at accountability, but also look at how we actually implement, um, these action plans, um, at the local school level. Could you just highlight for the, um, the school committee, um, the diversity among the award recipients, um, the types of plans that they have implemented at their schools, just so the school committee can kind of get a picture on the ground level, what different schools are doing innovatively and creatively to implement wellness?
Um, well, I'll, I'll try. Uh, we did give out awards, um, in six different categories of the policy itself, which is, so that we could highlight some of the different types of stories, if you will, um, that are, that, that will sort of shed some light on the amazing things that are going on. The Blackstone School actually won two awards. Um, they won an award, um, around, oh.
Health services.
Health services and, what was the other one I'm sorry? Oh, they, they are the one that actually won, um, an award on the entire, implementing the entire policy, because they have a wellness council that is made up of every stakeholder that you could name that should be touching this policy, including the custodian who came, um, to the event and was high, was applauded by the entire, um, the tire, everybody in, in attendance. Um, so the Blackstones doing some amazing things, and, um, I guess, let's see, who else? Do you want to tell one of the stories? And I'll think of another while you're.
Um, related to cultural proficiency, um, the Sarah Greenwood one, uh, received a certificate of recognition for their, the emerging work that they're doing with the, the new principal that's there, um, and, uh, they had a whole list, which I, I can share with you of all the work that they're doing, um, looking at the multiple, multiple dimensions of, of that work, and then also, um, one of the staff members presented at the, um, at the wellness summit as well, so shared their experience, um, implementing, um, cultural proficiency work in their school and how other schools can do it as well.
And I recall also, um, Theo Bryant had, um, a very creative approach, so much so that, was it six or 700 participants?
600 students received the, the, um, the program that they had in physical education.
Right.
Um, that was meant to, um, include yoga and mindfulness in physical education, and I think you went to that presentation.
Right, I did, I did, and, and, and so, you know, my fellow members, you, you all know, whenever we're able to, um, sit in the audience, um, or sit in a classroom, or sit and listen to the staff who are doing the work, um, it, it's, it's enlightening, but it's also exciting. To your point, um, Alex, um, just with your concern about some of the partnerships, um, for physical education, what Theo Bryant did was, they, they actually looked at the partnerships and they said, hey, we can recreate that. Instead of extending, you know, a partnership, um, let's recreate it in-house with our own staff, um, and to see hundreds of students show up, um, and of course, when we're looking at reducing obesity and we're looking at increasing physical fitness, um, the more creative, you know, we can be, the better. Uh, so if it is possible, if you could send the committee, yes, all the stories, because it is exciting, um, I was, you know, it, it, all the fills, you, you just get all the fills. When you see, um, one of the particular schools had, um, a creative approach to, um, health and wellness for students with special needs, um, so you saw just creativity across the board, um, but you also saw the collaboration, to their point, the custodian who, you know, everyone was standing and cheering and hollering for, he, he, he showed up. Um, two of them actually showed up. So to see the, this, this wellness council is made up, especially in the schools, of so many partners, um, everyone who is touching a child and impacting their lives. So your work, as you can tell from the questions, is, is really, is really exciting, but also really critical that we have 100% participation. So if you can send us the bright spots, that would be great, and we look forward to continuing to hear the implementation and the accountability that you provide to all the schools. Oh, my only other point, um, all of the new principals that we just were able to applaud, do you have an onboarding process or an introduction, an introductory process, um, for your work?
I, I think in the past, we have, when there's been a new principals institute, we've tried to get opportunity to actually present there. Um, there's also a lot of things they have to learn, but, um, one of the things that we're doing as an entire asset division is developing priority courses, and one of those will be on creating safe, healthy, and sustaining, um, schools, and we hope to have a version, we're, we're planning that to be a version for principals and a version available to schools. So that would be a place where they would get introduced to the wellness policy and why health is so important to closing, um, the opportunity and the achievement gap. So that, that's coming.
That's good, that's good. Thank you, and thank you for your work. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Actually, my question is more directed towards, uh, my colleagues and, and the superintendent, and just trying to pick up on something I think I'm hearing, and we've come back to us several times, is, is there some time that you would want the chair and I and the superintendent to think about a conversation or maybe a brainstorming conversation on this theory of minimum staffing outside of the context of the budget? Because usually we talk about it at budget time, about what is the minimum staffing that a school needs? Is that a conversation that we, should get, it's going to be a hard one, we know that there's no easy answer, but is, is, is it something we should, it's an ambiguous issue, which is always scary for a policy board to be involved in, but do you think it's worthwhile or starting to think about that?
I think definitely we should. I, I think Jerry has been sort of the mouthpiece for that, um, but I think the, you know, it touches upon a lot of areas, and, and, I mean, it doesn't mean that, you know, you know, it, that everything has to, you know, has to be there, but I think we need to know when, when it isn't. You see what I mean?
Kind of building a theory of it.
And begin to really understand, understand the impact.
I don't want to preempt the conversation, but I mean, I take a contrary view, and I don't necessarily take the contrary view in the sense that, um, I put a valuation on any one of the number of, uh, different positions that might fall into a conversation like this, but I think anytime we start talking about minimum staffing, um, you have, um, you create the potential for tying your hands down the road if a budget crisis arises, or, you know, you don't even necessarily need to get into a crisis anytime we have our year-to-year budgets where we're making decisions, and, you know, as a deliberative body that has, um, responsibility for determining a budget on a year-to-year, um, uh, as a year-to-year process for the district, um, I, I think this concept of minimum staffing often works its way out in, in real time. Um, but having said that, I don't want to siphon conversation, and I, and I think, you know, if, if there's an agreement amongst the membership that we have a conversation like that, I will prepare my comments in full.
So, so, so I, I don't want to, um, um, superintendent's pointing out to me that I, this may be better in new business, so we should not, we should, uh, thank you very much for your report.
On flight, yeah.
You sparked our.
The parliamentarian.
Because you bring up an issue that I look forward to taking action on this proposal in our next meeting, so thank you, thank you, thank you.
Another thing, I was just saying that we probably should have gotten legal guidance on that, and, and would you agree that we probably should handle that in new business, not in the ball, wellness policy?
It's not, it's not about the wellness policy. I think it's in general, something that we want to be able to understand.
But I, I think, I think we can, I'm sorry, I stepped into it once again, I apologize. So thank you very much for your time, thank you. So, um, so, uh, any new business that someone wants to, uh, to, uh, bring up?
Thank you.
Oh, I did, I thought I said, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Sorry, 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 wasn't being, um, uh, I was going to start my new business by saying, uh, I know that Michael must be listening and watching.
He actually is not.
Oh, good, well, this is, well, he should get the recording, it's a perfect example to say how much we miss him, uh, and hope that, uh, many of you know, uh, Mr. Chairman O'Neal had, uh, back surgery last, uh, week, and we hope him, um, we wish him a speedy recovery, but I, I just would like to, I, I hear, and I think it's a complex issue, that you would want us to think about how we could have a conversation around this issue without necessarily overdefining it. That's, I just want to get that sense, that that's an idea, and we.
I, I, I want to respond to Michael, because the fact is that it is precisely because we are responsible for the budget, that we need to know. I, I, I think it's due, it's our due diligence to understand. If we want to deal with some of the problems that come before us time and again and again, we need to know, we need to know. Otherwise, we're shooting in the dark.
I think it's, it would, my only thing is that I think that's very subjective. I just don't know how you get to what is, what, you know, I think of when I, I run an organization, I don't know necessarily that having these five extra people is going to lead to that impact. Is it, can we look at it differently, and I agree with Michael's point about, it could, it could get us in trouble in terms of if we don't meet that minimum, then we can be in a lot of trouble, versus looking at like, what's the, the optimal, you know, way that we want to staff a school, and just looking at it a little bit differently.
I want to quickly rephrase my stimulant to this. It wasn't, let's sit down and define a minimum staffing level, that's not what I said. I said, in this broad, you know, it's a hard word, it's a conversation we've had in a lot of different ways, it's a concept, I'm not saying it's going to be the answer, but that should, I'm just asking, is this something we should find a way to have a, put time aside to discuss, get prepared to, and I think as Mr. LaCanto pointed out, it's a difficult idea, we'll need some background, we need to think it through, we need to think about where the problem points are, and I just want to get a sense that this is a topic that people think would be worth bringing forward, and I understand the way I defined it may be problematic, but I think the concept is something that keeps coming up in a lot of meetings.
I, I think, I think we should discuss, though. I mean, I, uh, even if it is something that's challenging, we, it does come up every, you know, I've only been here for a year, so every year that I've been on the other side watching, it has come up, so I do agree.
And outside of the process of budgeting.
Yes.
I would agree.
That confuses the conversation, makes it a panic, get overly specified, which is not our job.
I think as the school committee, I want to encourage, um, you, if, when, if and when this conversation happens, the focus is on the type of services and supports that we are providing to young people, and not necessarily a definition of an exact position, and so it's about services and how we provide those services to young people, very important distinction.
Yes.
So we'll, we'll, I take it that it's something, it's a concept, broad idea, topic, where we get to, we'll have to.
Vice chairman, yes, I do agree that this is a conversation that needs to happen outside of the budget process, because we know what takes place, both from a feelings, from the concept, but also from the actual decision that needs to be made during the budget season. So I'm grateful that this presentation sparked our desire, interest, but also imperative. Um, yes, we're looking at the services superintendent, but the services will require potentially a skilled personnel, um, and it's so, if, if we don't, you know, if we hear time and time again in public comment, the concerns of, you know, our, our nurse is only here two hours a day, what happens if there's a crisis, you know? When we hear those things time and time again, I do understand the concern of what would minimum services, you know, be needed for a school. So I'm grateful that the, the presentation and this team, this council, because of, when we look at that slide, when we look at all that needs to take place within a school to achieve a, a healthy child who can learn, it's going to require leaders and staff, and so, um, that is a conversation that we will need to expand upon.
I'm delighted that my faux pas created some passion. Are there, are there other new businesses that people want to suggest?
Yes, I do have. When, when we had our retreat in January, we talked about having, um, about being able to get ahead of time, you know, sort of the roster of topics that the school committee would, would address. So I was wondering what happened that we haven't gotten it, and whether we could, you know, coming in, in beginning in September, get at least a six-month leeway on what, what topics are going to be discussed at each meeting. Doesn't mean that it has to be the totality, but at least we need to be able to prepare for this or prepare for that, and, um.
Great idea.
And I, I would like to add, I don't, I know it hasn't been the practice, but, um, I think it's hard to do a budget once a year. I mean, I have no sense of, you know, where we're at in the budget in terms of expenses and revenues, and, you know, I just feel like it, I would like to see numbers more than just once a year, and we said we would, we would start preparing for the budget process much earlier, which we did this past year, which was great. I definitely want to see that again, but I would like to advocate for that.
So report on projections and actuals?
There was a report last week, last time, from Eleanor.
So you received, um.
I wasn't here last time, so I apologize if we did it.
No, you received an email with the latest fiscal report, um, I believe is, as of, um.
So then that's, that, I, I didn't look at it, but I'd like to advocate for the future that we still, we continue to have more often, so thank you.
Okay, great. Well, that concludes our business for this evening. Uh, the next school committee will take place on Wednesday, June 21st, at 6:00 PM. If there's nothing further, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
No public comment.
All right, looks unanimous, good night. What, well, we got to get out of here by 9:30, so.
Oh, okay.
Good night.
That's a bomb.
Go Cavs.
Bring out the broom, baby.